All right, they're up there now. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is time to, we will call to order the February 8th special meeting of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency Board of Directors. I will ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will, hands over hearts. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chair West.
Yes.
Director Aronio.
Here.
Director Craven.
Yes.
Director Bennett. Or, I'm sorry, and Borcherd.
Here.
I see Andy Waters out there. Any other alternates out there that I can't see from here? No, all right. Agenda review, any changes?
No changes, Chair.
All right, any public comments? This is an opportunity for public comment. For any matter not otherwise on today's agenda, please step forward, identify yourself, and address the board. Hearing them, we'll move on to board member comments. Director Aronio.
Just have one. At the next meeting, we're going to take up the ordinance, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Director Borcherd.
None.
All right, let's move on, then. We have a, there is no consent agenda at this meeting. We have a regular agenda. Item number one, a GSP update.
Yeah, good afternoon, Chair West. I'm here for the record. I'm here speaking on Fox Canyon tag. Your board first approved developing the GSPs in December of 2015.
We've been working on them, oh, should I start over? Did we?
Just hard to hear.
Yeah. We've been working on them for over three years, and we're now coming close to completing the revised draft GSPs, which is good because the state deadline for critically overdrafted basins is January of 2020. Your board chartered a technical advisory group to assist a consultant with compiling and understanding existing data, reports, and analyses, and review and comment on work products. As Chair of the TAG, I would like to thank the TAG members for their time and service to what they had originally anticipated was going to be a one-year commitment. So, your board selected DUDAC as an independent, neutral technical authority with no local conflicts and with the knowledge and expertise to develop Sigma compliant GSPs. It's been a long and arduous process with perhaps unprecedented public involvement throughout. Identification of minimum thresholds and measurable objectives, or MT MOs, and estimates of sustainable yield for the basins is one of the most important aspects of GSP development. The November 2017 preliminary draft GSPs included preliminary identification of MT MOs and preliminary sustainable yield estimates. The preliminary draft GSPs also included extensive appendices of data, including hydrographs of every well in all the basins that had sufficient record. Your board adopted a process which provides significant opportunity for public engagement and input on groundwater sustainability, including MT MOs. There have been approximately 40 public meetings, including 18 board meetings and 22 TAG meetings, where sustainability criteria has been discussed. DUDAC presented four evening public workshops, and surveys were circulated to stakeholders requesting input on sustainability indicators and degrees of unreasonableness. And then your board took the unprecedented step of releasing the preliminary draft GSPs for public comment in January 2018. At your January 2019 meeting, a couple of weeks ago, DUDAC presented to your board an overview of the groundwater modeling scenarios, initial sustainable yield estimates, and the approach to selecting the MTs and MOs. DUDAC subsequently prepared three technical memos to provide a contextual overview and approach for completing the revised draft GSPs in terms of the approach for the modeling of future groundwater conditions, selection of the recommended MT and MOs, and estimates of sustainable basin yields. The TAG discussed the memos at its meeting this past Wednesday. TAG members requested hydrographs for the wells showing the MT MOs, which were subsequently provided. Some TAG members suggested that setting the MTs at the lowest groundwater elevations was appropriate. However, as your board knows, historical groundwater lows have not been sustainable. If they were, we wouldn't be here today. Also, as you know, the West Los Poses management area in the Pleasant Valley Basin are in hydrologic continuity with the Oxnard sub-basin. So therefore, the sustainable yield in the MT MOs in these basins are linked to mitigating seawater intrusion in the Oxnard sub-basin. At this week's TAG meeting, some comments appeared to focus on being more protective of certain basins at the expense of others. DUDAC scenarios and analysis have no bias for one basin over another. As you listen to DUDAC's presentation and receive comments, it's important to keep some things in mind for perspective. Modeling and analysis has once again confirmed what your board already knows. Optimizing yield from the basins will require modifying current pumping patterns. This will require infrastructure projects to support moving pumping in the future. Once the initial GSPs are adopted, regional studies and feasibility analyses need to be conducted, and replenishment fee implementation considered to build the projects ultimately needed to bring the basins into sustainability in the next 20 years. Sustainable yield MT MOs will be reviewed and revised for the required GSP updates at a minimum every five years. The state will not view exceedance of a minimum threshold as failure achieves sustainability over the next 20-year implementation period, as we are dialing in the projects and management actions to achieve sustainability in the long run. The initial sustainable yield estimates in MT MOs are appropriate for these revised draft GSPs. Your board stated that you intend to hold a 60-day public comment period for the revised draft GSPs, during which time stakeholders and TAG members can again provide comments, which will be addressed in the final GSPs. Today, we are asking your board to provide feedback and approve the general approach to completing the revised draft GSPs so that the public GSP review can begin this spring. We will also discuss four proposed additional management areas following DUDAC's presentation. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Jill Weinberger to come up and provide DUDAC's presentation if your board has no questions of me. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Jill Weinberger. I'm with DUDAC. And as Kim said, I am here yet again to discuss minimum thresholds and measurable objectives, these sustainability criteria on which the basins will be managed under Sigma. And so I'm going to discuss today the specifics of the approach that we took. We spoke in generalities and discussed the approach at the last meeting two weeks ago. And the specifics are going to be focused on how we got to the actual water levels that were included in the memos that came out earlier this week or at the end of last week. And these are the specific water levels that are being considered for inclusion in the revised draft GSPs. I will say, even before I jump into this, that through discussions with TAG two days ago and through discussions internally, we've already identified a couple of areas where we've had to adjust the minimum threshold that is in that memo, and I'll highlight that in this presentation where things have differed a little bit. So it's often a good idea to kind of remember where we've been. So a long process, as Kim has pointed out, and we know we're moving forward pretty quickly. But to take a step back and look at where we've been to put this process in context. And so what I have here is a couple of plots. The first one, the bar graph, is the historical seawater intrusion from the United Water Conservation District modeling efforts from 1986 to 2015. So in this chart, we have, the blue line is the total seawater intrusion, where it's positive, that is seawater intrusion going into the Oxnard sub-basin. The yellow there is the upper aquifer system, and the green is the lower aquifer system. So the blue is just the sum of the yellow and the green. And what we see is that in the model results, the historical model, which replicates water levels in the basin quite well, we have seawater intrusion in the upper aquifer system in 23 of the 30 model years. We have persistent seawater intrusion in the lower aquifer system in every single model year. And we have a net seawater intrusion, when you add the two, in 29 of the 30 water years. So even during periods of higher rainfall and the ability, when United had the ability to spread more water in the late 90s, early 2000s, we still were seeing seawater intrusion in the lower aquifer system during that time period. And when we look at the hydrographs, I'm going to caution this a couple times. These are just a few hydrographs. This is not intended to be an exhaustive detail of every single chart we've put together. Kim said there are all of the datas in the GSPs. This is just to illustrate this particular point. When we look at the Oxnard hydrographs in the Oxnard sub-basin for the lower aquifer system, you know, this is borne out. We have persistent water levels below zero, below sea level throughout the 1985 to 2015 time period, okay? Some of these approach sea low, but we have generally low water levels. Same is true over the same time period in the Pleasant Valley Basin in the lower aquifer system. Again, for selected hydrographs here, we have persistent water levels below zero, below sea level. If we look at the Los Poses Valley Basin, we have an illustration in parts of another concern with Sigma. So one concern is seawater intrusion. That's one of our sustainability indicators. Another sustainability indicator is chronic declines in groundwater level. So when we look at the eastern part of the, if I can pull up the, on the left, if we look at the eastern part of the West Los Poses management area, we have selected hydrographs here that show chronic declines in groundwater levels, starting in one well, we have a record back to 1950. We have more extensive records starting in the 1980s, declines in groundwater levels that those actually, water levels did recover during a period in the 90s and into 2000s. And that recovery period corresponds with the time when reduction, there was a reduction in groundwater production, and in fact, there were inland deliveries of surface water to offset that groundwater production. This middle one, this middle plot, is for the Eppworth Gravels Aquifer Area. That's in the east Los Poses Basin management area. And in this, we again have chronic groundwater level declines. There are recoveries in the 90s. That's as people began to drill deeper wells and drill into the Fox Canyon aquifer and reduce their production from the Eppworth Gravels. We have a few plots here for the eastern part of the east Los Poses management area. This well in blue is actually pretty far north and pretty far east. It's north of the Eppworth Fault, and it's reflecting increased production over time, chronic decline in groundwater level there. This yellow well is much closer to the central, more central part of the basin. It's actually close to the Cuyagus Municipal Water District Aquifer Storage and Recovery Program wells, that well field, and we see the influence of production from those wells in the water levels here. So again, I'm not saying that this is every single well and that every single well in this basin has experienced chronic groundwater level declines. I want to make that clear. What I am saying is that there are enough wells, and we could pull out more examples, these are just some, that there are enough wells throughout the basin to have chronic groundwater elevation declines be a basin-wide concern and need to be addressed under Sigma. So this is stepping now from history into moving forward. And the key here is looking at sustainability indicators, these six sustainability indicators that we've talked about so many times. And we're really focusing today on seawater intrusion and chronic declines in groundwater elevation. The general background is that in order to get to minimum thresholds and measurable objectives for water levels in these basins, we have to look at whether or not the basin is being managed sustainably based on the sustainability indicators over a 50-year timeframe moving forward. That's what's specified by the guidance documents by DWR. So we start with a 20-year implementation period. During that 20-year implementation period, we are allowed to have declines in water levels. We're allowed to have seawater intrusion, net seawater intrusion. But once you get into the following 30 years, the sustaining period, that's when you're being held to your minimum thresholds that will prevent chronic declines in groundwater elevation, and they will prevent net seawater intrusion. And this is, this is a balancing act, right? Really, ultimately, what we're trying to do here is balance the groundwater production, which maintains, it's an economic engine of this area, while still working within Sigma to minimize the impacts to the sustainability indicators, minimize the impacts to uses and users of groundwater in the basin, but keeping that production sustainable under Sigma. And so it all focuses around the sustainability indicators. And selecting these indicators, I said it at the last meeting, I'll say it again, it's an iterative process. There's no forwards and backwards here. It's a cycle. And you're going through, and you're selecting sustainability indicators that are reasonable based on the sustainability criteria, and then you're looking at potential impacts, and then you're adjusting them, and you're trying to come to that balancing point. The ultimate endpoint of that lies with you because it is the determination of significance and unreasonableness at the local level that needs to be made to finalize these. We've gotten them close. We're now opening this up for comment and discussion. So I'm going to take you through each individual basin and how we got there. And I promise that as we see this chart over and over again, I won't dwell on it to quite the degree that I will now. But if we start with the sustainability indicators for the Oxnard sub-basin, we first have to ask, you know, we've got these six indicators, and so we first got to ask, are they relevant to the basin? And in Oxnard, all six are relevant to the basin. Is there a potential for chronic groundwater level declines? Yes, there is, although that is generally in the historic record been offset by seawater intrusion. Is there potential for the depletion of groundwater and storage? Yes. Again, the groundwater and storage is replaced by seawater in that same aquifer. Seawater intrusion, we know, is a concern. Is there a potential for the degradation of groundwater quality exclusive of seawater intrusion? The answer for that is yes. So we've seen compaction of, we've seen release of brines from compaction of sediment layers that's separate, that's a water quality concern that's separate from seawater intrusion. And we've talked a lot at previous meetings about how we're actually going to handle that a little bit differently in this initial GSP. We will address the concern, but we haven't set selected minimum thresholds and measurable objectives for concentration related to degradation of groundwater quality independent of seawater intrusion. Still be monitoring for it, just haven't set those here. Subsidance, is it a concern? Yes, although it is hard to work with in this very complex tectonic area. So separating out subsidence that is directly related to groundwater withdrawals is not an easy process in this basin. And we haven't seen predictions, well, two things. When we look at the sediments that are, in which these aquifers are residing, they're not as prone to compaction in the way that we hear about, you know, 30 feet of subsidence in the central valley, right? That's just a different kind of aquifer, acquitard interaction than we have here. So we're not actually considering it as related to groundwater productions, sustainability for Oxnard at this time. And then the same is true for depletion of interconnected surface water and groundwater. Is it a potential concern for this aquifer? Yes, we do have, we've identified some areas of groundwater-dependent ecosystems, but right now, no one's actually producing from that uppermost semi-perched aquifer system. You rarely hear me talk about it in these meetings. That's where these ecosystems are drawing their water. And in fact, in the modeling runs that we're going to get into later, we see groundwater levels rising in that aquifer system and sustaining these ecosystems. So it's, if projects were to come forward to utilize that water in the semi-perched aquifer, they would have to consider these groundwater-dependent ecosystems. But right now, they're not related to groundwater production in the primary aquifers in this basin. So here we have, again, we're striving to balance groundwater production and impacts to the sustainability indicators while looking at uses and users of groundwater and all the time making this production sustainable. And here, we're using groundwater elevations throughout all of these basins as a proxy for sustainability. You've seen this before as well. When we look at the sustainable yield, that's our first step in getting to what these minimum thresholds and measurable objectives, the criteria on which we're going to base sustainability needs to be. We need to figure out what the sustainable yield is. And we have a tool that helps us get there. And that tool is, in this case, the United Water Conservation District model for the Oxnard Pleasant Valley and West Los Poses basins. So we ask ourselves, what is the sustainable yield? It is a groundwater production rate that limits further migration of the saline front beyond the 2015 demarcation, and it results in no net seawater intrusion over the 30-year sustaining period.
One question. After the 20-year period, then we have to be in a situation where we have no net.
That's correct.
But what is, and at this point in time, it will be no net relative to the 2015 baseline?
No, the net seawater intrusion is independent of the selected initial groundwater production rate. So in the future baseline condition, we have averaged, we started with the 2015 to 2017 average production rate, right? But what we see here, and we've gone over a number of times, is that that's not sustainable. And it's not sustainable, in fact, based on looking at seawater intrusion.
Excuse me, I'm not talking about the rate.
Okay.
Talking about the location of seawater intrusion.
Oh, I see. Yes, we're looking at two different things. I apologize, I didn't, I didn't understand that distinction. We're looking at two different things. So one is looking at the model predicted seawater intrusion at the coastline. The second is to look at the particle track simulations of where water would go in the basin, and those particle tracks were set at the 2015 line of, of understanding of where the seawater intrusion front is.
And at this point in time, we intend to keep that 2015 particle track line as the baseline?
That is our understanding, yes.
Great.
That's what's proposed in the memo, and that's what's proposed to be included in the revised draft.
Just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Yes. So we've got the future baseline with the 2015 to 2017 production, and in that case, we have net seawater intrusion as measured by flux across the coastline in the upper aquifer system in yellow, the lower aquifer system in green, and obviously, a total as well. I'm not showing the particle tracks from that simulation, but the particle tracks head inland. So we then said, well, what are the tools that we have available to assess how we get to sustainability? How do we minimize the migration of that front, and how do we minimize seawater intrusion? Well, one of the tools we have is the projects. We know that there are projects that have been proposed. So the next step we took was to assess what would the projects do to the seawater intrusion flux and to the migration of the particles at the 2015 front. And we saw here, again...
Jill, did the projects that were considered involve, include moving pumping or diverting water from upper to lower?
Yes. So some of the projects had the result of shifting the production around between the aquifer systems, so between the lower and the upper, but they did not move pumping appreciably around the basin. So they were not conducted to optimize pumping locations in the basin. And that's because, under Sigma, we have to work with projects that have met a certain level of scrutiny and have sort of gone through a certain process to be included. And that's spelled out in the regulations, and so that's the process where the Board Operations Committee reviewed the projects that had already been called that could be included, and then said, you know, okay, here are some projects that we can look at. So there are other projects out there, but they just haven't gone through that Sigma process yet.
Did the analysis take a look at the effects of moving pumping, notwithstanding the absence of a product, of a project in the package?
We have not analyzed that yet, no. So the next step with the projects that we had and with the tools that we had available to us at the time was to say, okay, well, we can reduce groundwater production because the future baseline with project scenario still didn't get us there. So when we reduce groundwater productions, production, excuse me, we came close, but we talked about this at the last meeting. We're not really quite there because we have flow out to the ocean in the upper aquifer system. So we're losing fresh water through the coastline out to the ocean, and we've still got persistent flow inland in the lower aquifer system. And the same is true with the other reduction without projects, in the other scenario, the bottom one, the reduction without projects. It turns out that that reduction was a differential reduction between the aquifer systems, and it had a fairly similar effect to incorporating the projects, which also shifted pumping between the aquifer systems. And we see a similar result there. We have no net seawater intrusion, but we still have flow, freshwater flow going out through the upper aquifer system and flow coming in to the lower aquifer system. So a couple questions here, and those questions are, is this perfect? No, it's not, 100%. It's not perfect. We've talked about this in the past. This is not the way that you want to manage the basin in the future. The next question is, is it good enough to start to understand the sustainable yield of these basins? And is it good enough to use that understanding of the sustainable yield to select minimum thresholds and measurable objectives with the understanding that future optimization of the pumping location, future projects, better understanding of filling of data gaps will allow you to adjust those minimum thresholds and measurable objectives? And we would argue that, yes, we are at the point where this is good enough to be used to select the initial minimum thresholds and measurable objectives, keeping in mind, this is an adaptive process, and we are not in any way setting these in stone in perpetuity. So let's take a look at what that means for sustainable yield.
I do have a question. Understanding that, and if I understand you correctly, whatever minimum thresholds, for example, we set today can change a number of times over the implementation period, the 20-year implementation period. What minimum threshold will the state look at to assess whether we are sustainable at the end of that 20-year period, the point we land on 20 years from now, or some different number?
No, the state will be looking at the point you land on, I can't guarantee, I don't work for the state, so I can't guarantee this, right? But they're, they're looking at the refined minimum thresholds, 15, 20... But they're, they're looking at the refined minimum thresholds 15, 20 years out. They're not looking at today's minimum thresholds. This is, this is to start the planning process, and it's to begin, in the meantime, we have to be selecting, and I'll talk about this at the very end, we have to be selecting interim milestones to get us there. And so, we can begin to measure our progress towards the minimum thresholds through time, and the state will be looking at that. They said they're not, in the guidance document, you know, and they're not instantly penalizing anybody for not meeting those interim milestones, but 10, 15 years out, if we haven't done it and we haven't come up with a justification for why we're not there and what the minimum threshold should be, then, then the state's going to be taking a look at those as well. So, we've talked about sort of the theory behind it all and, and where we land with this when we come to looking at the sustainable yield for the Oxnard sub-basin with the tools that we have available right now, is that we're looking at 27,000 to plus or minus, 27,000 plus or minus, I guess, about 3,700 acre feet, 3,700 acre feet per year in the upper aquifer system, keeping in mind that's groundwater production only, and at that groundwater production rate, we know we're allowing some freshwater to leave out to the, to the ocean. We're looking at 12,000 to 13,000 acre feet per year in the lower aquifer system. Again, there's an error estimate on that, an uncertainty estimate, I should say, plus or minus 2,200 acre feet, and this is based on looking at the various model scenarios. And Peter will have a, a more detailed explanation of that. He'll be discussing that with the tag, at the special tag meeting coming up. And if we add, look at the total, we're looking at, in these sustainable scenarios, on the order of 39, 40,000 acre feet per year, plus or minus 6,000 acre feet per year of sustainable groundwater production. In addition to the groundwater production, in the model, we, the model included surface water and projects, and so in the reduction with projects scenario, the total water delivered was on the order of 48,000 acre feet per year. And in the reduction without projects, it's on the order of 43,000 acre feet per year. So, now we need to take this and translate it into those water levels. And so, I'm going to walk through that process in a little bit more detail in the Oxnard basin than I will in the other basins. And the, and the theory here, and I want to emphasize this is the, the theory, and then I'll get to how it's put into practice, is that the minimum threshold is the low water level during the 30-year sustaining period, and it's the lowest that can occur without resulting in net seawater intrusion over that sustaining period. So, we can have water levels that allow for seawater intrusion at times, so long as that when they, they also recover and do not always allow for seawater intrusion. And the theory for the measurable objective is it's the water level around which basin management decisions will be made relative to the observed climate, the projects that are undertaken, and the likelihood of undesirable results. So, when we look at the sustain, when we look at the model runs, we can actually have the model produce water levels for us. And what we see here is that in the, the two, the two, excuse me, the future baseline in the blue and the future baseline plus projects, we have consistently lower water levels than we do in the two sustainable scenarios, which are in the, if I can get the cursor to come up again, in the green and the blue, right? So, the two upper hydrographs are the two sustainable scenarios. Those are the two that have the reduction with projects and the reduction without projects scenario.
Could you go back a slide, or maybe it's going to be two? Go back one more slide, please. So, is our baseline going to be no total net intrusion? In other words, in the reduction with projects, we have seawater intrusion into the lower aquifer, but not into the upper aquifer. Are we going to call that sustainable as long as the upper aquifer is?
We are, we are saying now that these are, are good enough on which to base planning decisions for the future. We are in no way arguing that these are the optimal solutions for these basins, and in fact, we recommend that additional modeling runs be undertaken. I don't know that those modeling runs and that the additional projects need to be considered for this GSP, but they absolutely will in order to optimize use of the basins and optimize the sustainable yield for the five-year update.
So, the threshold, though, is net. If the lower is, is, is coming in by 2,000 and the upper is, is taking freshwater out at 3,000, are we going to say that's sustainable?
I don't think that is the threshold that we're setting. I think what we're looking at is water levels, which have some uncertainty in them, and that we are selecting water levels in, in each case from the reduction without projects and reduc, and the reduction with projects. But I don't think we're saying here that it's okay to allow net seawater intrusion into the lower aquifer system over the, over the 30-year sustaining period.
So, it seems that this definition here, it says a groundwater production rate that limits further migration of the saline front below, beyond the 2015 location and results in no net seawater intrusion. It seems like we should say no net seawater intrusion in either the upper or lower aquifer in the 30-year sustaining period.
I think that's a, that's a clarification that would be good to have from your board, if that's something that you decide to adopt.
Is it something you recommend?
It is something that I would recommend, yes.
Because this could be interpreted as?
Yes.
As, because, you know, you talked about water levels, but we're saying, this graph, you look at this graph, we're saying that reduction with projects is okay because the blue bar is bigger than the green bar. And so, I could see a number of things happening here, but if somehow the blue bar wasn't that big, and somebody'd say, well, the, the lower's not getting any more than it was before, but we just don't have as much freshwater going out, we've got, you know, that, that doesn't, that, so I appreciate your recommendation, and I think that's a clarification that as we go forward, I'd be, I'd be, will be suggesting, so thank you for that.
I think I might be done with this slide. I hope I'm done with this slide. So, yeah, the, the point here is that, that the water levels are much lower, both during the implementation phase and the sustaining phase, in the projects, in the two unsustainable scenarios, the two that allowed for net seawater intrusion. So, we can assume that those do not meet our understanding of the theory of selecting a minimum threshold or a measurable objective, and really what we need to be focusing on are the sustainable scenarios as well as the sustaining period. So, in this plot, I think I ended up missing a line on here, which is not very helpful. In this plot, we have actually what was done, which was to look at the low water levels, and in this case, we have a couple of them that just dropped below five feet below, just below five feet mean sea level. So, they're at 4.8. And in the memo that you got, this is one of the, the slight discrepancies between the memo and what we're going to see here today. In the memo, we rounded to the nearest five feet. So, in this case, the water level dropped to 4.8 feet. The minimum threshold was set at five feet, or selected at five feet, because it was very close. We had some discussion with staff and with tag, and, and in order to maybe allow ourselves a bit more acknowledgement of the uncertainty in all of this, we've changed this to rounding down to five feet. So, if it was at 4.8, it got rounded down to zero. So, it's an adjustment of five feet. And so, you'll see some discrepancies in the plots that I show relative to the, the numbers in the memo.
If water levels persistently stay at minus five feet to sea level versus water levels staying persistently at zero over a long period of time, would you have persistent seawater intrusion?
You, you must have caught a preview somehow of my next slide.
Psychic, yes.
Yeah. Oh, here, here's the, here's the slide, which actually shows the minimum threshold, where that is at zero, and the measurable objective in this case is at the 50%, it's at the, the median water level, so water levels are above it 50% of the time. But to address your very question, we have an example, this is not an actual hydrograph, this is not from the model, this is numbers I made up in Excel, of what would not be sustainable under the net seawater intrusion definition. And the key here is that connection between the minimum threshold and the measurable objective that we talked about last time. So, at the minimum threshold, if the water level is at the minimum threshold, there will in fact be seawater intrusion into the aquifers. However, if you keep the water level high enough over a longer period of time, you will offset that seawater intrusion. And we see that in the particle tracks, where they kind of wiggle back and forth, and they don't really allow for a net migration of seawater into the aquifer. So, this is why we've tied the measurable objectives to the minimum thresholds in this basin, is to prevent the, the very scenario that you were describing, where if, in this basin, if you manage just to the minimum threshold, you will allow for net seawater intrusion over the 30-year period. So, this totally made up example would not be sustainable. It's above the minimal, it's above the measurable objective a couple of times here, but it's below it well over 50% of the time. So, we.
Go back over that, please. That's not making sense to me.
Um, when we look at net seawater intrusion in those, I'm going to go back a couple of This, this slide actually compresses quite a lot of information into a, into a couple of colored bars, right? And what it's, what it's doing is it's looking at the total seawater intrusion over the model run period, and it's summing that, and then it's averaging it over the length of the model, right? So, you'd come up with, if the model run is 50 years long, you add up everything over the 50 years, and you divide it by 50 to say, this is the seawater intrusion average every year. And so, that's what's being presented here. I'm sorry, 30, yes, in this, in this case, good correction, thank you, Ron. For this particular case, we're looking at the 30-year sustaining period, right? So, we added up everything over the sustaining period, the 30-year sustaining period. That's the total that you would get over that period, and then you divide it out by 30, right? And you come up with an average every year. Now, that means in some years, you have positive seawater intrusion, meaning it's coming into the aquifer, and in other years, you have water flowing out to the aquifer. So, if you sum all of those up and they equal zero, then you're good. Zero divided by 30 is still zero, and that's no net seawater intrusion. So, when we're looking at water levels, we're comparing water levels, the, the time when you have low water levels is the time when you have seawater intrusion into the, is the year, those are the years in which you have seawater intrusion into the aquifer. The times at which you have higher water levels are the times at which you've got groundwater flow out of the aquifer. And what you're looking to do is, over the 30-year sustaining period, have those times summed to zero. Does that?
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
What I'm not following is, you've got colored bars that indicate upper and lower aquifer systems, and then a, a blue bar, which totals and averages the both of them together.
It just sums, it sums the two.
Sums the results of the two.
Yeah.
Is it in, is it contemplated that we'll be managing upper and lower together and looking at the net to determine sustainability, or will they be managed separately?
Well, so I think, yeah, I think this was the, the question that Director Bennett had, which is to say that if you're just looking at that blue bar, is that enough? Could you have 5,000 acre feet a year going out in the upper aquifer system so long as it's less than 5,000 acre feet a year coming in, in the lower aquifer system? And I would say, no, that's not enough. But right now, this look at the net seawater intrusion, that's based on some, the board goals that were adopted, I think, in the end of 2015, and that there may be some clarification that you can discuss to that, to, to discuss managing each aquifer system.
Now, I understand the blue bar.
But that's a management distinction as distinct from Sigma compliance. Does Sigma compliance speaks to net seawater intrusion?
I think net seawater intrusion by aquifer. I think even by, if we're looking at aquifer system, I think we can justify that in, in this, these basins, but it, but it seawater, Sigma looks to manage by aquifer.
Because i- 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 in some ways, it would be preposterous to say we should get credit for 5,000 acre feet of freshwater that went out in the ocean, which now doesn't do the aquifer any good at all. And then another 5,000 coming into the lower aquifer. Well, what we're doing is, the upper aquifer can't get better than 100%, so it's at 100%. Meanwhile, this one keeps deteriorating.
That was the point of my earlier question about projects.
Yeah.
Well, and this, this bar chart seems to indicate to us that there's an opportunity for a project in the upper aquifer system to somehow?
Sure, absolutely.
Take pumping out of the lower, and, and then we can perhaps net out upper and lower. But I was misunderstanding whether we were trying to manage all of these layers together as one or individually, and?
Yeah. Ultimately, we have to, I think we have to, as you said, net, net by aquifer, but it does mean, I think we all see an opportunity, to whatever extent there's freshwater going out of the upper aquifer out to the ocean. If we can grab it and get it into the lower aquifer, that's a win for everybody, you know, in terms of that.
Everybody gets to relive this part of the presentation now? Yeah.
Go back to your hypothetical.
Yes.
And from what I recall from our last meeting, when we were looking at those charts with all the multicolored up and down cardiograms.
I hope that's not what mine looks like.
It's what mine looks like.
It's severe.
The, if I recall correctly, when we were looking at MTs and MOs and the lines that those things wanted to lay between, I would have said this looked sustainable because we were bouncing between those points. In other words, we were lying between the MT and the MO. That seems to be hitting the goals to me, rough figures. You said that's an, an example of not being sustainable.
And that, and that's based on, so, yes, I am saying that this is an example of not being sustainable, and that's based on selecting the measurable objective at the median water level, because just as we talked about, there's the time component where you, you, over many years, if you have years in which there is water going out and years in which there's water coming in, then you get to know net seawater intrusion. Well, that's directly related to the time component here, where water levels, which are directly tied to seawater intrusion at the coast, water levels have to be high enough for a long enough period of time to allow those years where there is some migration offshore, or that you've minimized everything. I mean, if you're managing within a very tight range, then you can minimize both, right? So, because the measurable objective is set to that, that median water level, if I go back here, we see that in these scenarios, over the 30-year time, we had no net seawater intrusion, right? But we had periods of time when, you're right, it's, it's below the measurable objective. That's allowed. But we had an equal period of time where it was above the measurable objective.
So, what I'm hearing then is that this agency wants to manage to the measurable objective.
Yes.
Absolutely.
For seawater intrusion, yes.
Okay. Could I just offer, and I appreciate your question, and that she started off talking about, when the tag was talking about that also, but if you pick a minimum objective like that, if you take that as your standard, or target is to be at the minimum objective, that allows us to have the flexibility to go below the minimum objective sometimes.
Measurable.
Your measurable objectives, I'm sorry. It allows you to go below the measurable objective sometimes and not have to do something dramatic. Whereas if you said, okay, your minimum threshold, you have to do something dramatic when you get to minimum thresholds.
As you begin to approach that minimum threshold, yes.
Right. And so, if you pick minimum threshold, number one, you have to pick it higher, because if you stay at minimum threshold the whole time, as she was talking about, could you put your, you'll actually have seawater intrusion with this graph. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You'll have seawater intrusion, you'll have net seawater intrusion. So, the reason that, they're just trying to say, look, we don't want to all, you know, get into a fire drill as soon as we go to 13 or 10, right? We want to say it's okay to go to 10 sometimes, right? As long as we stay above 15 an equal amount of time. But you couldn't accept saying, we're not going to do, we're just not going to do things until we get below five, because that's our objective, because we will then lock ourselves into the potential long-term seawater intrusion. So, it actually gives us the flexibility that we're looking for, is how I interpret it.
That is how it's intended for seawater intrusion. It is a little bit different for chronic declines in groundwater elevation, which we'll see in a minute. But yes, for seawater intrusion, because, and particularly in Oxnard and Pleasant Valley and western part of the West Los Poses, water levels are very much controlled by the ability of the United Water Conservation District to spread surface water during wet years. So, there's a climate connection to the water levels that we see in Oxnard, Pleasant Valley, and West Los Poses. There's a little bit more of a direct climate connection than we see in, say, East Los Poses. And so, with that climate connection, you're going to go through periods of drought, we know that, that's why Sigma was enacted, right? And we want to have, I think the basin should have, and the basin manager should have the operational flexibility to weather that drought. And so, the measurable objective is really a gauge of whether or not you're going to have the opportunity to weather a drought if it comes up. So, I would not advocate for always maintaining water levels exactly at the measurable objective. I would instead say that you can allow yourself the flexibility to go above it and below it, and you can allow yourself the flexibility to go below it, so long as you understand that you also need to be above it. So, we then moved from the hydrographs, and to spare you looking at every single one, which we did, we looked at the minimum thresholds and measurable objectives based on the criteria I just talked about, the process I just talked about, and I've broken them out by aquifer here. So, this is the Oxnard aquifer on the left in the Oxnard sub-basin, and in this area, there are going to be a few of these that have been adjusted five feet lower than what's in your memo. We can provide revised tables to you to reflect the adjustments. And we're seeing water levels for minimum thresholds on the order of zero to 15 feet in the Oxnard aquifer, in the Magoo aquifer on the right, again, zero feet up to 25 feet in the Forbay. I'm going to highlight here, because this question has come up at a previous board meeting, about what these water levels mean as far as hydraulic conditions within the aquifer and potentially artesian flow. And in the western part of the Oxnard sub-basin, some of these water levels are in fact higher than the ground surface. And so, that gets into concerns about well casings, and how they've been sealed and abandonment. And we know that's an issue, but I will try to remind you of two things. First of all, these plots specifically are for the upper aquifer system, where we are currently in the model allowing constant flow out, overall net flow out, and so these water levels may be a little bit high based on that model run, those model runs. And the second thing is that they are directly tied to the hydraulics of preventing seawater intrusion in the model. So, although we may need to maintain artesian flow at times in these aquifers, that just needs to be brought out, so people understand that, to prevent seawater intrusion over the 30-year period.
So, hang on just a second. If you go back to the upper aquifer system there, if in fact, we are at some point, ideally, going to be managing upper and lower aquifers separately, individually, wouldn't that say that these levels that you say are a bit high...
Correct.
...should be adjusted, so that they're not too high?
I'm not saying, let me, sorry, I jumped in a little too soon. I'm not saying that they are too high. I'm saying that there is the potential, when we optimize use of the basin and look at different pumping scenarios, that these may be adjusted lower.
Well, in fact, your bar chart at the beginning said, indicates they are too high, because we have net flow out to the ocean.
The bar chart suggests that they may be too high, but keep in mind, we have rounded down to the five feet below in these, which is a little different from what you had in your memo, but we've already made an adjustment downward for that, and on top of it, we need to look at potential long-term sea level rise, which I have not included here, that was included in a set of hydrographs provided for the technical advisory group, where sea level rise projections are on the order of 1.7 to 1.8 feet at the Santa Monica and the Santa Barbara tide gauges by 2070. And so, we need to adjust water levels appropriately higher to account for that as well.
And we have not done that yet.
We will, it's, the density difference is not significant there from the density of seawater to the density of fresh water, so it's basically adding two feet to these, to these levels here. So, the two feet has not been added to this set, it was shown in a set of hydrographs provided to TAG.
But overall, in the modeling that you're doing, are we including sea level rise?
As a post-modeling effect, yes, we are. So, you can either incorporate it into the model, or you can say that basically, that because the density difference is not such a strong influence right now, that you can adjust the water levels accordingly to keep up with sea level rise, and that's what we're doing.
So, we're not, it's not in the model, we're just recognizing that we can adjust
The minimum thresholds.
We can adjust the minimum thresholds, et cetera, at our pleasure as the sea level rises? Or not at our pleasure, but...
Yeah, I wouldn't say.
Yeah, we have to do it.
Yes.
Right, but we can do it later.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Here we have the maps for the lower aquifer system, the Wayneemi and the Fox Canyon. Again, you know, water levels range zero to 45 feet. I should point out that there are actually two different wells, this is a single well, at different completions, that are being measured here. So, one of them is up at 20 feet, the other one, which is much deeper in the aquifer, is at minus five. This is the Fox Canyon aquifer, we've got lower water levels down in the south, minimum threshold's at minus 20, minus 25, up higher in the north, the Grimes Canyon aquifer well here, minus 20, minus 25, and then we have a few wells screened in multiple aquifers. So, these are the wells for which we have selected minimum thresholds and measurable objectives in the Oxnard sub-basin. Now, we're going to go through this again for Pleasant Valley, and then again for Los Poses. I'll make this description a little bit quicker. When we look at the sustainability indicators for Pleasant Valley, the one that we can eliminate as a direct influence in Pleasant Valley, in the sense that we do not have a seawater intrusion plume under Pleasant Valley in the aquifers from which the pumping is occurring, is seawater intrusion, right? So, we don't have direct seawater intrusion into the Pleasant Valley basin, but you'll notice it's got a little asterisk by it, just like Barry Bonds' records in the baseball history. I'm a Giants fan, so I get to say that. The asterisk suggests that there is no direct seawater intrusion in this aquifer, in this basin, but water levels in the western part of the Pleasant Valley basin have the potential to influence water levels in the Oxnard basin, which then influences Oxnard's ability to prevent seawater intrusion.
And so, why wouldn't we, under depletion of interconnected surface and groundwater, have a yes listed in there?
Is it applicable? Sure, it could be. I think actually, this, I should have checked this particular one. I'm actually not sure that there are any potential groundwater-dependent ecosystems in that basin, so I should double check. That might be no. It's really, it depends on whether or not we've identified potential groundwater-dependent ecosystems. So, again, we look at the sustainable yield here, and for the western part of Pleasant Valley, because of this influence and interaction with the Oxnard basin, we're looking at the sustainable yield numbers from the two sustainable scenarios in Oxnard, right? That model actually connects Pleasant Valley, Oxnard, and West Los Poses, it incorporates that entire area. There are, I will note, some rounding differences in this that might make things a little confusing, so I'll try to clarify that. In the reduction with projects scenario, we've got about 2,000 acre feet a year being produced from the upper aquifer system, or the older alluvium in this basin. We've got about 5,000 acre feet per year in the lower aquifer system. Both of those numbers were actually, you know, 23, 2400, and 53, 5400. So, if you added them together and rounded after they were added, you'd get to 8,000 acre feet a year. For simplicity in the memo, I just added the two and the five and got to seven. We have the actual numbers, but keep in mind, there is some uncertainty in all of this anyway. So, we're looking at a total groundwater production on the order of 7,000 to 8,000 acre feet per year in these scenarios. But of course, in Pleasant Valley, the key here is that an additional, whoops, sorry, an additional 17,000 acre feet a year was delivered as surface water in the model, and an additional 19,000 acre feet per year was delivered as surface water in the other model. And again, this has to do with rounding up and down as to why those numbers are different.
And as we're doing our allocations, we're allocating based on surface water and groundwater, so that in some years, people would be able theoretically to pump 19,000 acre feet out of the ground, as long as they rested the groundwater enough to recover that, in the, over a five-year cycle, something like that?
I can say I've been involved in a number of the aspects of this development, but I haven't been involved in the allocation process, and so, I am not really qualified to speak to that, I don't know.
Could you clarify that for me? I mean, as you look at this, you go, okay, that's fine, if we're 2,000 out of the ground and 5,000, you know, then we, you know, but what, but we do, the way we're talking about our allocation system, you're allocated based on your surface water and your groundwater, and...
Yeah, that's correct, Director Bennett. There is a flexibility to pump more when service water deliveries aren't there, and then pump less when they are, so that they average the groundwater allocation. I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
Okay, but...
This is based on the 2015 to 2017 average extraction, what the modeling was based on.
Right, I understand, but bottom line is, we could have significantly more groundwater pumping, but it has to be enough less that it averages 5,000 and 3,000.
Yes, the annual average is...
The annual average is going to have to stand.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
In 20 years.
Well, we may have to adjust at the five-year intervals if we're like way off, right? We may have, at each five-year period.
Sustainability for us is to get to those numbers at the end of the 20-year period.
Sure, yeah, yeah, right. Not at the first year.
So, I don't want to create a panic now, saying that we're diving to that.
Yeah, exactly, I got you, yeah.
Well, and to that end, it's to get to somewhere around these numbers in 20 years, right? We don't, this is not the written-in-stone final sustainable yield, and in fact, these model runs have not been optimized, as we've seen, as far as the outflow in the upper and the inflow in the lower, they've not been optimized for every pumping adjustment in Pleasant Valley. They're the first steps that we've taken towards getting to a sustainable yield. So, again, here, we can go through a very similar process to what we saw in Oxnard for the western part of the Pleasant Valley basin, and I can almost guarantee I'm going to get tongue-tied with this, because now we're diving into western parts of western management areas. So, just as in Los Poses, we have a West Los Poses management area and an East Los Poses management area. Now, for this GSP, we've also developed a West Pleasant Valley management area and an East Pleasant Valley management area. Those two management areas are separated by the Bailey Fault, and really, the bulk of the information that we have is for the West Pleasant Valley management area. So, we're just focusing on the West Pleasant Valley management area here. In the western part of the West Pleasant Valley management area, this is where we have the potential for water levels to influence, water levels, to influence flow across the basin boundary into Oxnard, and to therefore influence Oxnard's ability to control seawater intrusion. So, we've got a hydrograph from the sustaining, the sustainable scenarios here, again, similar way of selecting a minimum threshold and a measurable objective. In eastern Pleasant Valley, eastern part of the West Pleasant Valley management area, it's a little bit different, right? There's no model correlation between the groundwater level elevations there and seawater intrusion at the coast. And so, in this area, we're really more concerned with chronic declines in groundwater elevation, and with the potential interaction between water levels in the eastern part of the West Pleasant Valley management area with water levels in the western part of the West Pleasant Valley management area. But because we haven't optimized to chronic declines in water levels in the eastern part of that management area, we in fact selected a minimum threshold that is just at the low water level observed during the sustaining period. This will certainly need to be investigated in the future, we absolutely recommend looking into this more in the future. This is where we are for now as a starting point. This is what that translates into for water levels in the older alluvium, which is the upper part of the aquifer system, in the Magoo and Oxnard, what would be the Magoo and Oxnard equivalent sedimentary horizons aquifers, we've got a minimum threshold at minus, hmm, I think something, oh, yes, sorry, this is another one where we have two layers. So, the minimum threshold here is shown for the upper well in the Oxnard, that's why it's blue, and it's at 30 feet mean sea level. There is in fact a lower completion there that's at minus 50 feet to reflect the different aquifer heads, the heads in the different aquifers, not location. And then, we've got another one completed in the Magoo equivalent at minus 55 feet. In the Fox Canyon, we've got a range all below sea level, but a little higher than the elevations we were seeing in the initial hydrographs I showed in the very first slide. And we've got a range from, it looks like about minus 45, to up in the eastern part, we've got quite a deep minimum threshold there at minus 135. So, if we move to the Los Poses Valley basin, we'll go through this quickly.
Before you leave?
Yeah.
All measurable objectives have to be above sea level in the long run, correct?
No, I think they may have all turned out that way, but I could conceive of a scenario in which, particularly for chronic declines in groundwater level, you're not actually, you don't need to tie your...
I meant for seawater intrusion.
I would suspect that that is true. I would suspect that that is true. I haven't confirmed that, but yeah, I would think that that would be true.
Thank you.
The, if we look at the Los Poses Valley basin, looks similar to Pleasant Valley. We know here, again, we have the West Los Poses and the East Los Poses management areas. We again have that asterisk next to seawater intrusion, because in the West Los Poses management area, in the western part of that management area, water levels have the potential to influence flow across the boundary and influence Oxnard's ability to avoid seawater intrusion. In this basin, in the eastern part of this basin, in East Pleasant Valley, we do have identified some potential groundwater-dependent ecosystems. They haven't been confirmed as groundwater-dependent ecosystems, and in fact, as we look at the historical record, we see dry arroyos, you know, 70, in the 1970s, and it's only that they, these potential ecosystems developed as we got the continuous flow from the wastewater treatment plant discharges upstream of this basin. But there is a potential here for those to be groundwater-dependent So when, we start with the West Los Poses management area, just to wrap up, looking at the United Water Conservation District Model Domain, which is Oxnard, Pleasant Valley, and West Los Poses. We look here at the sustainable scenarios, which would be related to the western part of that basin for sea, the potential to influence seawater intrusion, and we get production in the upper aquifer system. It's not really the upper aquifer system, but in the upper sedimentary horizons, for lack of a better term, about a thousand, constant 1,000 acre-feet per year in all the scenarios. We look at the lower aquifer system, which is really where the pumping is in this management area, we've got between 9,000 and 10,000 acre-feet per year. Those are the green bars, and so we've got a total of 10,000 to 11,000 acre-feet per year. With projects, there was water delivered of an additional 12,000, excuse me, an additional 2,000, so the total is 12,000 acre-feet per year. Here again, we're looking at really just one well in this West Los Poses management area that has the potential to influence seawater intrusion as far as the wells for which we've selected minimum thresholds and measurable objectives are concerned. In one of our wells, it has the potential to influence the flow across the boundary. And this is another well that I need to highlight. In your memo, we had looked at the model results, and this well is actually screened across multiple aquifers. And the model, the initial model results that we got back and we reviewed, took the predicted elevation at the uppermost of those screened aquifer intervals. So that was, I think, in your memo, on the order of 20 feet is where the minimum threshold ended up. That's too high. This is screened across multiple aquifers, and that was a helpful discussion at TAG that was brought up. We needed to take a look at that again. So instead, we have now averaged the potentiometric head across those aquifers, and so it's much lower here. It's actually below sea level with the measurable objective. I get on the order of minus 10, and the minimum threshold at minus 40.
And just so you know, we have that on these screens here, and sometimes we're looking at these screens because we just can't read like the small stuff. So when you say this-
Oh, sorry.
And you're pointing up there. So which one were you referring to?
Sorry, in this upper plot. Do you not see the hand?
We could-
Okay. Sometimes I don't always remember to hit the button, which is part of the problem.
Good, okay.
Yeah, so, yes, in the western plot, this one up here with the little arrow on it.
All right.
Jill?
Yes.
The level, the new level for 16 J03 then, you said, was a minus 10 for a management objective and a minus 40 for a, there you go, thank you.
Yeah, and those are backwards, right? So it should be minus 40 for the minimum threshold and minus 10 for the, this was, I apologize, I was changing this last night as we were developing this presentation. So that's, yes, but it's minus 10 for the measurable objective, which is higher, and it's minus 40 for the minimum threshold, which is lower. In the eastern part of West Los Poses management area, the lower plot, we did not, in fact, again, optimize the model to get to constant or long-term sustainable groundwater levels. In fact, what we see with the reductions that we did and the projects that we did is that in many of the scenarios, we had long-term groundwater level increases over the sustaining period, right? This is, the blue, the dark blue and the green are the two sustainable criteria, sustainable scenarios for Oxnard, the Oxnard sub-basin, but they would not necessarily be a good indicator in the eastern part of the West Los Poses basin, because they go up over time. Sigma does not require you to recharge every aquifer forever and ever over time and have water levels rise indefinitely. So in this one, the baseline, which I did not show, the baseline did have chronic declines in groundwater elevation. So instead of using the baseline, we looked at the one with projects, which is the gray one here. So if you look at the sustaining period, it is a little bit higher at the end of the sustaining period than at the beginning, but we selected the low water level over the sustaining period from the projects scenario for the eastern part of the West Los Poses management area. So this is what that looks like, and again, I apologize for mixing those up. It should look a little closer to this with the minus 40 and the minus 10. And now that I see that these dots are different colors, oh, right again, I've confused myself. So Kathleen, very helpfully, told me I should have actually split the dot colors, so I would recognize this when I see it. Next time, I will remember to do that. This is another well here. It's got, it's a lighter dot, if I can get the cursor up to it, in the middle of the basin here. This is a lighter dot because it's reflecting this minus 15 water level. There is a separate screen interval in the same location, separate well, that's screened lower, that has the lower water levels in it. And then, so we've got a range here on the order of minus 10 to minus 90 in the eastern part of that basin. That wraps up the United Water Conservation District Model Domain, but we still have the East Los Poses management area to look at, and that was done with, investigation of that management area was done with a different model, but similar strategy and tools. So in this case, we started with a future baseline to see if it was sustainable, and we're looking here for chronic declines in groundwater levels over the sustaining period. If there are chronic declines in groundwater levels that do not recover during periods that are not drought periods, then it is not sustainable under Sigma. And so at the 2015 to 2017 groundwater production rates, we had chronic declines in groundwater levels throughout the hydrographs that we reviewed in this basin. Again, next step was to incorporate projects. We have projects that influence water levels that we could incorporate here. And what we see with this, we kept the groundwater production the same at that 2015 to 2017 rate to see if the projects were enough to maintain groundwater production at the 2015 to 2017 rate. And in places, they were. Right along the Arroyo, the projects which are focused on the Arroyo and focused on maintaining recharge in the Arroyo, those projects maintained groundwater elevations. However, as you got more distant from the Arroyo, you still had chronic declines in groundwater elevation in many wells in the East Los Poses management area. So then we began to look at reductions. What other tools do we have to see when we could eliminate chronic declines in groundwater elevation? And at a rate somewhere on the order of 17,000 to 20,000 acre-feet a year, dependent on which projects were undertaken and where we're looking in the management area and distribution of pumping, we can actually get water levels that are maintainable through the sustaining period that do not exhibit chronic declines in groundwater levels, groundwater elevations. So we're looking at, you know, 17,000 to 20,000 acre-feet a year as a sustainable future of production. Here, these are very busy hydrographs. We did a few more runs than we did, well, I'm showing a few more runs really here than I was showing for Oxnard, but these are tied to the five scenarios that I had on the previous slide. So here we see the baseline in blue. Here's the sustaining period. That is a chronic decline in groundwater level. We do not see it recover during non-drought periods. Even this green line here, which, if I can pull it up, on this scale, it looks like, okay, well, maybe it comes back up. There is in fact, just, it's a scale issue. There is in fact, a decline of on the order of 5 to 10 feet through the sustaining period. Now, that's getting to the level of management decision on what's significant and unreasonable to the board and local control. I selected for this the wells that did not, and the water levels that did not exhibit any long-term decline over the sustaining period. But if there's wiggle room, if 5 to 10 feet is not a significant and unreasonable result, and we can show that to DWR, then I think that's justified to adjust the minimum threshold here. In the Upworth Gravels aquifer, if we look at the, both the projects and the baseline scenario, we see a long-term decline in groundwater elevation. I should point out the project scenario in this upper plot here. In the project scenario, this is relatively, this well is relatively close to the Arroyo, and it actually sees the effects of those projects quite well. It recognizes that. So in the Upworth Gravels aquifer, we identified reduction scenarios because the projects in this basin are strictly, the modeled projects in this basin are strictly tied to additional recharge along the Arroyo or maintaining recharge along the Arroyo. In the Upworth Gravels aquifer is a separate management area. It's distinct from the Arroyo. It's separated from the Fox Canyon aquifer. So in this basin, or in this management area, we translate this into these water levels, and you'll see that there are differences along the Arroyo. We have higher, generally higher water levels. We have a higher water level. This is the Upworth Gravels, outlined sort of in blue here. We have a higher water level in the Upworth Gravels aquifer, and we have lower water levels in the vicinity of the Los Poses incline. So I need to finish this, and I'll just leave it at that, because I know you want it done. No, I need to, I need to finish this with saying that we are fully aware that these are the initial minimum thresholds and measurable objectives, and we welcome feedback on these minimum thresholds and measurable objectives. I will say that they were selected in the framework of Sigma, looking at what the sustainable management criteria are for the various basins, and how we can achieve sustainability over the 30-year sustaining period. They might not be perfect, but they're pretty close. So if there are local considerations for adjustments here and there, we certainly welcome that feedback, as long as those adjustments are also made within the context of Sigma and ensuring long-term sustainability over that 30-year sustaining period in the model runs. So what are the next steps? Incorporating the sustainable yield, minimum thresholds, and measurable objectives into the revised draft GSPs with the feedback that we receive. Those revised draft GSPs will go out for more feedback and consideration, and these can be further refined during that process. Looking potentially at the combination of factors that would indicate sustainability, I talked briefly about the interim milestones. We have to identify those interim milestones to work towards sustainability over the next 20 years, incorporate those into the revised draft, and generally prepare that revised draft GSP. When that goes out and eventually is finalized for DWR, it's still not the end of the process, right? These still are not set in stone forever. The basins will not be judged based solely on these initial looks at the minimum thresholds and measurable objectives. We have opportunities to adjust them in the future, and we would recommend that additional investigations be undertaken to adjust them in the future for a number of the reasons we've been talking about today. We need to look at additional modeling for the five-year update to better look at the uncertainty, and to refine the minimum thresholds and measurable objectives. We need to fill in data gaps where we can, and we need to optimize the basin management and project feasibility moving forward. So that is where I will end. Thank you very much for this discussion. It was very helpful.
Thank you, Jill. One question, maybe the question that I've been asked most often, particularly with respect to the eastern portion of the Los Poses basin, is how does the, what is currently viewed as a chronic decline in groundwater levels compared to periods of, historic periods of decline that we know have recovered? How do these, how does a current decline compare to those, and if historically, the groundwater levels have recovered, why not set the minimum thresholds at those historic lows?
Well, I would argue that the historical low groundwater level elevations in the East Los Poses management area are actually a poor metric on which to base the long-term sustainability of the basins. And I say that for a number of reasons. One is that it's not tied to a sustainability indicator.
But if the sustainability indicator is the chronic lowering of groundwater levels, and we've seen chronic lowering of groundwater levels that recover, why isn't that a fair metric?
Well, the reason for the recovery in several cases is either through management actions that were undertaken to enact that recovery, not through changes in climate. So this is not a drought recovery. It's through an act of management. There's also recovery from additional recharge, the long-term additional recharge to the Arroyo that has affected rises in groundwater levels in the East Los Poses management area. So looking specifically at a historical low groundwater elevation does not actually tie you to a sustainability indicator. The sustainability indicator that you need to look at is chronic groundwater level declines.
But don't you see that? Don't you see that historically?
We have seen it, and it has recovered based on management actions. And what we've done to model this is to look at management actions and projects that could be undertaken in the future to limit chronic groundwater level declines, but we've also looked at various pumping rates that would need to be included in that, again, to limit the declines. Now, in the East Los Poses management area, there is more flexibility in where the ultimate minimum threshold will end up, but the primary flexibility that you have there is actually in the first 20 years. If you cannot demonstrate that there is seawater intrusion, which you can't, in East Los Poses, right, and you go through all the sustainability indicators and you say, I want to pump a lot more in the first 10 to 15 years, you can do that, and you will lower the groundwater elevation, but you're still tying this to a groundwater production rate over the 30-year period that does not result in chronic declines. So that level can come down based on how much you pump in the first 20 years, but you're still looking at a sustainable rate over the next 30 years.
The hydrographs I look at didn't have, most of them didn't have historical data. Are those available?
Yes, they are available. But I don't know the specific length of time for every single well that we've provided for what historical data are available, but yeah, we can look into that.
So if the recovery in the East Los Poses basin would have taken place because of rain recharge, you would view this differently than if the recovery took place because of management changes in the Arroyo and those things?
Yes, that's correct.
Staying on that basin for a minute, one of the comments we've received was that-
Staying on that basin for a minute, one of the comments we've received was that, see if I can get the terminology right, the MTs and MOs were set on trying to not have chronic declines in levels that included that wastewater flow coming down the Arroyo. And the assertion was that that was somewhat a false level. It's not kind of, it's not native water. It's not the water that was in the aquifer. It's just, it was, I suppose you could call it a management action. That we had Cuyahoga injecting water in the middle of the area. We had wastewater stream coming down from Seamy Valley and Moore Park. What is your answer to that?
So the minimum thresholds and measurable objectives were not selected to maintain high water levels. They're not, they're not based on maintaining a specific water level. They're selected based on ensuring that you avoid chronic declines in groundwater elevation.
Chronic declines of a period of levels that included those managed actions?
Chronic declines over the 30-year future sustaining period. So you have some flexibility in the initial 20 years, and those, and this is what I said, those elevations could be lower, but you still come to a production rate in these basins that will avoid impacts to your sustainability indicators. And in the East Los Poses basin, you're avoiding chronic water level declines.
Didn't quite understand that. Sorry.
Can I ask a question? Maybe me getting clarified might help. You're saying that after 20 years, wherever we are then, we can't have chronic declines from that level?
That's right.
So in other words, when we get to the 20-year mark, we now have to be in a situation where there is no chronic decline, and so...
On what basis? On the basis of 2015, 17? No.
On the basis of Sigma saying that groundwater level declines are allowed so long as they recover during periods of non-drought. I don't remember the exact terminology, right? But you can have them decline during a drought so long as you see them recover when there's not a drought. And in this basin, we don't have that direct annual variation in water level related to climate. We have a long-term percolation of water down into the basin. The water is quite old in this basin. And so looking at Sigma, a chronic decline that cannot recover during non-drought, so this is separate from a management action, during periods of non-drought, is by itself an undesirable result.
I hear all the definitions you're telling me, but I'm still not hearing the basis from starting of the look. Is it? Well, let me have her answer to the question first, because what's the starting point, I think is the important point, is it based on that longer historical look that was pre-discharge? Or is it based on the more recent look that was after the discharge where we have an artificially higher level?
Sigma is blind to that distinction. So in order to be sustainable for DWR, for chronic groundwater level declines, which is the sustainability indicator that we are concerned with here, you cannot have a chronic decline in groundwater level. Whether you start at 500 feet above mean sea level or 500 feet below mean sea level, it's the chronic decline that is the unsustainable factor for DWR over 30 years.
Okay, but if the chronic decline was at a lower starting point versus the chronic decline starting at a higher starting point, your MO and MT might be set at entirely different levels. Am I not right?
Yes, you are right. But the chronic decline is driven by groundwater production rates. So what we're doing, and this is, we welcome this discussion because the model simulated a reduction ramp-down period over the 20-year simulation, right? So you started at the 2015 to 2017 production rate, and then slowly decreased production over the 20 years. And the overall decrease in production depended on the different model runs and the different scenarios that we were looking at. But if you changed the pattern of that reduction in the first 20 years, so that you maintained production at the 2015 to 2017 rates, you would have a steeper decline than we see here, and then as you ramp down, you would end up at a lower water level. That's a fair, that's a fair way of going about managing this basin under Sigma, so long as your groundwater production rate in 2040 to 2070, that sustaining period, so long as that production rate does not result in chronic declines. So yes, you could investigate many different scenarios in which these water levels could be lower, but you're still not changing the sustainable yield or the estimated sustainable yield at this point over the 30-year sustaining period.
I get what you're trying to say, and it, you know, it's, doesn't matter where you start, you still have the decline. And it says that the pumping level is at a rate that seems to be unsustainable. You're going to have declines no matter whether you start at a lower point or a higher point. There's still the same kind of declines on a chart. But where that matters is in terms of how pumpers end up getting regulated at those levels. If the assumption is that Seamy Valley discharge water will cease, then regardless of pumping, it could be that those MTs and MOs are hit just very quickly, regardless of the pumping.
Well, so we did look at that, right? So we looked at a number of different model scenarios. The first one was just investigating current conditions, 2015 to 2017 average, with the ongoing, I'm sorry, with ceasing the Seamy Valley discharges. So the project, excuse me, let me start this again. The future baseline condition, the very first one that we simulated in the East Pleasant Valley management area, had 2015 to 2017 production rates, and it incorporated reductions in Seamy Valley discharge that were provided in a table and went through TAG and incorporated into the modeling. So that looked at what water levels would do if Seamy Valley discharges were ceased, right? And that's the one where we saw, yeah, it's declining throughout the basin. The next scenario that we looked at incorporated projects, and those projects, in fact, maintained the Seamy Valley discharges more or less through paying for them. And we kept the 2015 to 2017 production rate. And we still saw in many parts of the basin, not everywhere, we saw chronic groundwater level declines, even when we maintained those discharges at that 2015 to 2017 production rate. The area where we did not see chronic declines is adjacent to the Arroyo, because here we have the primary impact of maintaining those flows, right? So in those wells, those water levels were maintained. Only after we looked at those two scenarios did we then look both at reduced production with the projects to maintain that flow, and again, at reduced production without the projects. So we looked at rates that could be sustainable if we didn't maintain flows in the Arroyo, and we looked at production rates that would be sustainable if we did maintain flows. And all of that information was used to develop the minimum thresholds and measurable objectives. What we didn't vary in the simulations is a difference in the ramp-down rate or in the initial 20-year scenario. So once we started down the path of looking at groundwater rate reductions, it was always just a linear reduction over the 20 years.
Jill, could you go back a slide or two? Keep going, keep going. There you go, right there. Just, I want to understand this in the context of the question that Dave asked. Basically, is this telling me that where we need to be at the end of the implementation period in this portion of the basin is that we would be sustainable at 20,000 acre feet with the projects that are proposed in the plan?
Based on the modeling that we've conducted thus far, yes.
And where, I guess, and the baseline was a 22, so we're looking at a fairly small delta there.
Yeah. Compared to the baseline, I think recent production numbers in this basin have, in fact, been higher on the order of 27, 28 over the last five or 10 years. I can't remember what that was, but yes, relative to this 2015 to 2017 baseline.
And if we wanted to, I'm not suggesting this, I'm just trying for clarification, if there was no change in, from the future baseline through the implementation period, we probably would lower the level of the water in the basin, but as long as we reach the implementation period at that sustainable number, we'd be fine.
We haven't modeled that to look at the number of years, whether it's two or three or five, before you got to that 2040, you know, before you got to the end of your implementation period that you'd want to hit the brakes. But yes, so the idea is that you could not implement reductions in pumping right away so long as you understand that you are, you need to get to a sustainable rate that maintains you at a, that avoids chronic declines in groundwater levels during the sustaining period. And you can, you can, it's not a great illustration on this plot because there's so much on it, but you can see that there are, the different scenarios have different rates of decline in the implementation period. And so that's what's driving the difference, the potential different water level elevations that you could maintain in the basin to avoid chronic declines in groundwater levels.
Thank you.
When we say with projects, that is, one of the projects being locking in the deliveries from Seamy Valley of recycled water?
Yeah, and this is really a Peter question. Yeah, so Ron is helping me with this. It's actually two parts. So it is maintaining the Seamy discharges in the Arroyo, and it's also removing arundo along the Arroyo, both within the model domain and outside the model domain. So a rundo evap is, you know, has a high evapotranspiration rate, removes water quickly. And so if you remove it and instead replace it with native vegetation, you remove less water.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board before we ask for questions and comments from the public? Thank you, Jill. Ladies and gentlemen, any questions or comments with respect to the presentation that you heard, the minimum thresholds and the measurable objectives?
Good afternoon, Chair West members of the board. My name is Terry Foreman. I'm a member of TAG. I actually have lots of comments to make here. First comment, I guess I'd like to start with, is it seems that one thing that we don't do in these presentations is really provide a context for what we're talking about in terms of potential reductions. And so I've looked at that, and I haven't got an answer as to whether I'm right or wrong, but I think I'm in the right ballpark. But the, for the West Los Poses, Pleasant Valley, and Oxnard Plain areas, OPV plus West Los Poses, the historical average production and surface water deliveries over the 1985 to 2015 period, which is the period that the groundwater modeling was done in order to develop the calibrated models. And the total water supplies over that period were 130,000 acre feet a year. And then the groundwater pumping over that period averaged about 111,000 acre feet a year. And it seems to be in the right ballpark because I think in the OPV allocation discussions, we've been talking around 95,000, 100,000 acre feet, and then West Los Poses is about another 15,000 acre feet. So my numbers seem to be in the right ballpark there for pumping as I got it through the model. I'm pretty sure they're correct. And then for the surface water deliveries, the discussion has been around 14,000 acre feet a year for Santa Clara River water and 4,500 acre feet a year for Cano Creek water, which didn't occur until 2002, those deliveries, but in recent times, that's what it is. So we're looking in the neighborhood of 134,000 acre feet of supply. That's sort of recent history that we're talking about trying to manage in this process. And so I think we need to be thinking about reductions from that amount in terms of what the total water supply picture is. And so if you look at it from that perspective and look at the total water supplies that were being talked about today, we're looking at proposed supplies of 73,000 to 78,000 acre feet, 77,000 acre feet. So that's a 53,000 to 57,000 acre feet a year reduction in supply. So I think that's the context we need to be understanding that we're talking about Second comment is, I believe that the future available supplies may be underestimated by over 4,000 acre feet to as much as 10,000 acre feet a year, depending upon which of the two sustainable scenarios that have been discussed today. And because it's, because I believe there's been an incorrect application of the, what is the sustainable yield from the basins. And the reason is, is because, let's back up how we do that. We have to pick a representative hydrology, which is a period of time, which we basically picked 50 years. And in TAG, we discussed the 50-year period to some length. And so that's why we ended up with a 1930 to 1975 period, because it represents the long-term average hydrology. So we wanted to make sure, and we looked at the entire period, so we had an average rainfall over the entire period, and we picked a couple of periods, the 1930 to 1979 period and the 1940 to 1989 period, that were of comparable average precipitation to the long-term precipitation that we know in the area. And so as you've been hearing, the sustainable yields have been selected out of what's been termed the sustaining period, which is only 30 years out of the 50 years. So that's 30 years that are actually much drier than the 20 years before. The average hydrology is over the entire 50-year period, not the beginning, not the end, but over the 50-year period. So the representative period is 50 years. So instead of looking at the pumping that occurred during what's been termed the sustaining period, we should be looking at the total average pumping over the entire 50 years. And when you do that, you end up with my 4,000 to 10,000 acre feet higher total supplies. So we talked about that at some length in TAG, and I know at least one TAG member basically agrees with my assessment, because through the modeling process, we pump the average, not the sustaining. We pump the average over that 50-year period. So we should be looking at the average pumping over the 50-year period, which gives us more yield. which gives us more yield. Third, the sustainable scenario, so those last two scenarios, require substantial reductions of pumping while decreasing stream flow recharge from the Santa Clara River and increasing losses to tile drains and increases in stored water. So those quantities actually exceed the seawater intrusion that was being shown for the lower aquifer system. For example, the loss of Santa Clara River recharge ranges up to 3,200 acre feet a year. That's more than the seawater intrusion that was shown for, for the lower aquifer system in the two sustaining scenarios. In addition, there was increases to drain flows as much as 4,000 to 5,000 acre feet per year in those sustaining scenarios. So we're basically decreasing pumping and making sustainability, but we're losing, or I would say wasting water to these other locations. So we can also look at those as an opportunity. And if we could recapture those flows, then we would also increase the sustainability. But if you look at the total water loss, oh, and the other component is we're actually building storage in some of the basins, in particular, West Las Poses, by over 2,000 acre feet a year, which isn't a bad thing, but that takes water out of being out of use. And so if I'm a user of water, I might say, why should I put it in storage when I could put it to use? But anyway, those, those quantities without storage, the lost supplies to basically discharge out Santa Clara River and drains ranges from 7,800 to 10,200 acre feet a year. So if we take what I think is an error in the sustainable calculation for the yield and add that to these sort of wasted or lost water supplies, it ranges from 12,000 to 20,000 acre feet. So our sustainable yields would be increased by 12,000 to 20,000 acre feet if we could make it work. So those are obviously not trivial quantities of water. Fourth point is, in my opinion, there's no evidence to demonstrate that proposed level of cuts in Pleasant Valley and West Las Poses are required to abate seawater intrusion in the Oxnard Basin. There may be some requirement for some management operation and there may be some requirement for some cuts. But I don't know that we've demonstrated that and what level is really required. Because right now, we've only looked at two cuts, 20% and 25% in the analysis that you've seen. So there could be other scenarios that will minimize those cuts further, that could accomplish the same objectives. The fifth point is all of this is based on model simulations for specific hydrologic conditions, 1930 to 1979, a ramp down specifically over a 20-year period and, and given pumping at constant rates for all three basins. So the minimum thresholds and measurable objectives were selected from those modeled simulations. Now, if those conditions, the hydrology is different. Now, East Las Poses might be a little bit different, but I'm sure Pleasant Valley and, and Oxnard Basin, we, with an average hydrology, but if the hydrology occurs differently, may end up getting this there at a different route. We may need to have the minimum thresholds and measurable objectives sort of adjusted, or at least flexible to consider those changed conditions. But right now, these minimum thresholds and measurable objectives are set specifically based on a couple of simulations, which are not a very large, large look at what the range of possibilities would be. Ideally, we would run different hydrology and different pumping configurations to look at what that range and fluctuation might actually look like. And, and the primary purpose was to achieve minimizing seawater intrusion in all of these scenarios. So that, that was the primary objective. So somewhat similar, but the sixth point, sixth point is if we look at historical pumping in all the basins, they fluctuate based on hydrology. And that's partly because of available surface water and partly because if we get a really wet year, I don't need to water my crops heavily. And if we get a really dry year, I pump more to meet the needs that the precipitation hasn't met. So in the simulations, though, the pumping by individual pumpers is at a constant value throughout the period. We have a ramp down, but then they're constant in each of the basins. And that doesn't really allow us to look at what the fluctuation might actually be for that wet and dry variation in the, in what will actually occur. Now, that adds a complication to actually doing the modeling, but we haven't done that. So the minimum thresholds could be exceeded right off the bat in a, in a dry year where farmers actually, and, and the ordinance actually provides carryover rights. So I can carry over 50% of my water and then pump it in a dry period. So I could pump less in a wet period, pump more in a dry period. So I could get as much as 15 to 20% at least change in pumping between wet and dry period years, right? So we haven't really looked at that. So that could drop the minimum threshold or need for a minimum threshold lower than just this constant assumed pumping within the model. And we could look at the historical hydrographs and get a sense of that, but we didn't have time to do that. So it's really important to, you know, determine how adverse impacts can be avoided with as smaller reduction as possible because right now, we're looking at potentially really, really large impacts on, on the pumpers. I, I, I think we've made a lot of progress. I think what I see is kind of the start of the discussion and start of the analysis. But I think we've got a lot, a long way to go. And given the significance of the impact that we're talking about here, I, I think there needs to be more discussion and I would certainly hope that there would be more discussion to allow the stakeholders to weigh in on some of this. I can tell you right now, I didn't understand a lot of this until probably January. We've been talking about some of the stuff. I've seen a lot of the results like you've seen over the last few months, but I didn't get the basis for it. The first cut I got was in December. I did some analysis, came to TAG in, in the first TAG meeting in January and found out that all the models runs had been updated. So everything I had was revised. And so then I had to go do more work and literally just got a pretty good understanding as of last week as to what was done and have really come up with a lot of this in the last few days. But I still haven't got everything done. As a matter of fact, with the memo that we received on sustainable yield and minimum thresholds, I've got a few more questions that I need to get answered. Seems to be some inconsistencies that hopefully we can get cleared up. But anyway, I, I think there's more work to be done here. And I don't think, two analyses to address Director Bennett's comments about analysis paralysis, I don't think we're anywhere near that. So I think we've got a lot more to look at. Thank you.
Afternoon, Chair and Directors, staff, public. For the record, Brian Bondi, I'm speaking today as Dave Borchardt's TAG representative, Director Borchardt, sorry. First, I want to thank staff and DUDEC. You guys have been working really, really hard. And it's really, it's really showing and it's, it's appreciated. If we don't say that enough, please hear me now. I want to speak at a very high level about the undesirable results because I think there's a fundamental difference of interpretation that's kind of playing out here. And I'll start by saying the sigma language doesn't do us any favors. It's very obtuse for anybody who's read through it. It's, it's difficult to get your mind around and even-
The state legislature would never write an obteusse for local governments to interpret.
Well, even the DWR regulations are a bit obtuse, sorry, DWR. And I think that's part of the problem. You know, I'm working on sigma issues in different capacities in 10 basins. And so I talk a lot with a lot of people about these issues. And what I've found is that what I'm going to talk about here is not unique. People are having these conversations all over. And that is the interpretation of undesirable results. And basically, it boils down to two basic interpretations. One is, and I'm going to use chronic lowering of groundwater levels because we've talked a lot about that. One interpretation is that the chronic lowering itself is the undesirable result. Okay? And that's sort of the, the logic that's been presented here and is in the memos and so on and so forth. The other interpretation is the undesirable result is the significant and unreasonable effect caused by chronic lowering, which happens at some level. You with me? Okay. I've been, my interpretation is the second one. And, and we've gone back and forth on this probably nine months or so. So I finally reached the point where I wanted to make sure I haven't been putting my foot in my mouth for nine months. So I got together with DWR headquarters on the phone and we had a webinar. And I asked them point blank this question. And the response to me, almost verbatim, was chronically declining groundwater levels in of themselves are not an undesirable result. It becomes undesirable when significant and unreasonable effects happen as a result of chronic lowering of groundwater levels. So where that leaves us is they have to stabilize at some level. I agree, Jill's talking about that, we all agree. The groundwater levels have to stabilize at some level. The question for the GSA and the GSA's job, according to what DWR told me, is you have to determine at what level significant and unreasonable effects will occur. And that becomes the basis for your minimum threshold that you manage to prevent getting to. That is the explanation I was given. So I don't expect you to take my word. My recommendation to the board is let's have DWR come in and let's have them explain it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman West and members of the board. My name is John Grether. I'm a grower and a pumper of agricultural water in the Las Poses basins. If fellows like Terry Foreman and Brian Bondi have questions about the criteria, I feel as if anything I say is going to be pretty shallow and, and unsophisticated because I don't have the background that they have. I, I would like to make a couple of points, though, so bear with me. I think that one of the issues that has been mentioned, we had so many stakeholder meetings, public outreach, but, but that was a year ago. And in the past year, there's been very little progress toward reaching the general public. The discussion then turned, seemed to me to be more on the water balance of the amount of water going into the basins and the amount of water going out, whether it be by pumping or evaporation or, or just flow. And now we, we seem very focused on these very strict criteria of measurable objectives and minimum thresholds. And that hasn't been reviewed really beyond the TAG and the staff. There hasn't been the outreach to the public. So I would urge you to be patient and to give time for those of us who are pumpers to get our hands and our arms and our minds around these concepts. If Terry Foreman just got it last week, you can imagine how those of us who have not been a part of TAG, have not been to all those meetings, are, are struggling to understand this. So I would urge you not to be in a hurry. Give us the opportunity to interact with DUDEC. The LPUG organization has probably at an average meeting twice as many people in attendance as are here this afternoon. That would be an organization and a, and a forum that would be very appropriate for a presentation so that many stakeholders, whether they be municipal or agricultural, would have an opportunity to really try to understand these concepts. It also seems to me that we're basing these, these objectives and thresholds on the model. And as Mr. Bondi is, is, as I understand what he's saying is that's not necessarily a, a proxy for the undesirable results. And, and those models themselves have not been peer reviewed or reviewed by the general stakeholders. And yet I understand the concept that that's the best available science for DUDEC to work with. But nevertheless, I feel as if there needs to be more of an outreach regarding those models to the public as well. The, the third thing I'd like to mention is, and perhaps this has an easy explanation from DUDEC, the water flow, as, as was mentioned, is very dependent, the agricultural pumping is very dependent on the amount of rainfall. In wet years, there's a lot less pumping. But those years are not particularly, I think that the, the average of rainfall is skewed somewhat by one year being quite high and then a number of years being below average. And it never seems, we never seem to have average rainfall in and of itself. And yet the criteria of using the median as it relates to the measurable objectives is the median, and which would mean 50% above and 50% below. And that doesn't seem to me to match up with the way the climate interacts with the pumping that takes place. There very well could be a very easy scientific explanation for that. Perhaps sigma requires that. But it seems to me that the mean would be a better measure of the measurable objective. Thank you.
Susan Mulligan, Cuyahoga Minas Pue Water District. On the Oxnard Plain, it's easy to define undesirable results. It's seawater intrusion. In East Las Poses Basin, it's different. There's not a seawater intrusion issue. We've talked about chronic lowering of groundwater levels based on what Brian said. Maybe that's an undesirable result, maybe it isn't under sigma. But what is an undesirable result in East Las Poses Basin is bringing water levels so far down that people can't pump their wells. And there are two ways that people cannot pump their wells. One is, as water levels drop, your flow that you can pump out of a well decreases because you're lifting water higher. Another thing that can happen is a well can actually go dry to where you can drop your pump bowls as far as you can and you still can't pump water. In the memos that were provided in the board packet, there was reference to the fact that some wells are negatively impacted. It seems, based on sort of what we've seen and looked at, that some wells, certainly wells, because water levels are being allowed to drop for 20 years, all the wells will have a reduced production capacity. Some wells, it sounds like, will also not be able to pump at all. And John Grether got up here and said, please give the stakeholders time to understand this issue. And I think the things that's been missing is to tell the stakeholders how it affects them. So all of you stakeholders, how much will the water level drop at your well? Will it go below where the aquifer is? Because that's generally where wells are screened. And if there's a proposal to drop below the aquifer, I think that would be a real problem for some people. If it's just you won't be able to pump as high a flow, people need to assess that. In conclusion, I'm particularly sensitive to this issue because Cuyahoga has the ASR project. When we had an agreement with Metropolitan, we pumped for three years during a drought, which we aren't going to do again, we bought out Metropolitan. But during that period, we brought water levels down around our well field. And we got complaints from at least three different pumpers. You're negatively affecting our ability to operate our wells. Well, today, water levels are lower than they were when we were pumping during that drought. So it's something to consider. And if we're going to keep letting them drop for 20 years, people will be impacted. So what I would ask is that you ask your consultant to quantify how individual wells are affected, and it can be done, and then let the stakeholders take a look at that and see how they're affected. And I would recommend that that is your, what is it, negative impacts? I forget all the words.
Desirable.
Undesirable result. That's your undesirable result for East Los Poses Basin. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair West and members of the board. I'm Neil Maguire and I'm a stakeholder in the East Los Poses and represent and ag mutual in the West Los Poses. I'm going to touch on a few of the basins. I want to echo the comments that Susan just made and that we heard from John Grether earlier. I think with regard to process, there's obviously been a very long process so far. But this is really where the rubber is hitting the road with regard to the MTs and the MOs. And that discussion has, so far, I think, just started. I did attend the TAG meeting earlier this week. I think one of the comments that I heard from TAG and one of the comments that I made at that meeting was a request for more context and more background with regard to what the MTs and the MOs mean. And I think Susan's comments reflect that. What I would suggest is in the memo that you have with regard, from DUDAC, with regard to the MTs and the MOs, there's a table too that just identifies those with regard to groundwater elevations. I think what would be helpful for all of the stakeholders to have are extra columns on that table that show, okay, for that well, what's the historic low, if you have that? And what are the current groundwater levels at? I think there's additional information that I think will go to what John Grether and Susan Mulligan pointed out as well. But that's at least a start. I think that's something that would be appreciated that the stakeholders have not seen yet. With regard to the East Los Poses, I'll echo now Mr. Bondi's comments. I think when you look at the statute, obviously, the chronic groundwater lowering is important. Again, we all agree that those levels do have to level off at some point. And then obviously, the question is where. And I understand DUDAC's point that we may get to a certain point with regard to groundwater production rates where whether they level off here or whether they level off here, the rate may be the same for both of those. But there are very important reasons to look at. You know, are you setting that level at the right spot? Should it be here or should it be at the historic low? And the comments from DWR about, well, it's not just the chronic groundwater lowering that's important. It's what happens when you level off and where are you? You know, that's important because we saw at the historic lows, what we didn't see, I should say, in the East Los Poses was with the historic lows, any other undesirable impact. We didn't see subsidence, for example. We didn't see anything else that came into play. Putting aside maybe Susan Mulligan's comments about impacts on wells themselves. But when we look at the so-called deadly sins under Sigma, we didn't see anything at that point. So what I think would be helpful would to have, would be to have a model run that would tell us when, where do we level off where we see those other undesirable impacts? Not saying that's necessarily where we're going to put the MTs or the MOs, but at least to know where that level is. Is it even at the historic point or not? So I think that would be helpful information for the stakeholders in the East Los Poses to have as well. With regard to the West Los Poses, and I think this impacts PV as well, I want to touch on a comment that was made in Mr. Loeb's opening about receiving comments that perhaps would benefit one basin at the expense of another. I think that's a pretty unfair representation of what the comment was from the TAG members on this issue. So let me try to explain what I heard at the TAG meeting with regard to this issue. What I heard was, okay, DUDAC ran a model with no pumping reductions, just baseline. That's obviously problematic. Then we ran model scenarios looking at uniform reductions to deal with seawater intrusion in Oxnard, inland West Los Poses, in PV. Are there scenarios, though, where maybe some management areas reduce at X percent, but other management areas reduce at Y percent? And we get the same benefit with regard to seawater intrusion? So as a practical matter, if we ran all the scenarios that, I forget the number now, at 20% reduction, is there a scenario, though, where Oxnard gets reduced to 20%, but PV and West Los Poses get reduced at 15 or 10? And the result is very much the same? Those scenarios, I think the comment from TAG was that those scenarios have not been run? And it would be beneficial to have that information? And so I would encourage that direction from the board to run those so that we can get a better sense of what is exactly needed in some of the more inland areas to address that seawater intrusion issue. With regard to PV, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get to this quickly, but I was trying to determine from the slides here, I think this is it. I understand that the proposed North Pleasant Valley desalter project has been built into the modeling. And what I have a question for, I suppose, is whether or not these numbers, when we're looking at the total yield here, does that include the desalter production? Or is that independent of the desalter production? I ask because, I mean, the desalter production is potentially 4,500 acre feet a year. And so, you know, obviously, with a basin this small, a management area, I guess I should say, with these this small, that's potentially a pretty significant issue. And so I would appreciate having an understanding of whether or not, I know, again, the project was built into the modeling. Has it also been built into the yield? Or is that separate and apart so that you could have, say, 7,000 to 8,000 acre feet of production separate and apart from the desalter? I do think that, again, with regard to the modeling, there should be modeling runs done without that project to see what its impact on the basin is. I know there's a resolution that was passed in 2016, I believe, that pushed that project along. But there were some pretty significant caveats in that resolution that dealt with first consistency with regard to the GSP and then whether or not the project would have detrimental effects on the water resources in the basin. I think we've got to run the model with and without that project to have an understanding of what those effects are. So that would be my comment with regard to the PV basin. And with that, I'll wrap it up and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Neil. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Jurgen Gramco. I don't have such high-level questions, I just am confused farmer here. Director Bennett, you pointed out that on one of those bar charts, the upper aquifer was going offshore, the lower aquifer was still coming onshore as far as seawater intrusion, made the point that they should be both net zeroing or at least not going onshore. And then the consultant made the comment that Sigma calls for the aquifers to be managed separately. I just want to be clear on that because we've been talking about it by basin for this entire time. And I've always thought it should be brought down to the more granular level of aquifer. So are we going to end up then with allocations by aquifer, by management area? I mean, the map that was part of the background package in the Oxnard Basin, for example, shows 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 management areas. So if you have five management areas and you just manage by upper and lower aquifer system, not each of the six or eight, however many aquifers there are, you're not going to have 10 different allocations, two times five? So it's not a criticism, it's a question. You know, where are we going with this?
Mr. Chair, if I could make a clarification. I do, I was planning to discuss those management areas after we got through this discussion. So perhaps Mr. Gramco could hold or defer that question till after we bring that up after the discussion of the DUDAC presentation.
Thank you.
Can I offer, just while the other speaker's coming up, my initial thought is you might have to, if you have chronic persistent saltwater intrusion in an aquifer, you know, if the lower, you just can't, no matter what you're doing, you can't get it. You may have to because you have to address that issue. Whether that's what you start with, I'd be, I'm open to, you know, to hear that and stuff.
Chairman West, member of the board, Curtis Hopkins, the TAG member representing Director Craven. I've heard a lot of good questions here today. I think there's been a lot of good discussion and I really enjoyed the presentation. We saw most of this at the TAG two days ago and just received this information. So like you, we're still trying to process it and understand.
You know, only a hydrologist could watch this presentation twice and say they still enjoyed it.
Very possibly. But given that, your challenge is to put together a plan by 2020. Not to solve all the problems. You have time after that to continue to refine the model, to continue to develop projects that are not in the plan. There are very few projects in the plan that met the criteria that Sigma provided to be eligible for the plan. I hear a lot of suggestions of the things that we should look at. While I totally agree, okay, we have water building up in the semi-perched and coming onshore. Well, maybe we can create a project. This is good. But I think what we've identified through the process of developing the plan through the study that's been done by your consultant, that we have a lot of data gaps. We get to certain places where we go, well, what about this? And we go, well, we really don't have any wells in that aquifer, in that area of the basin. So we're looking at, okay, what do we need to do over the next five years, maybe, to put in facilities to help us fill in critical data that are missing as well? Looking at strategies, reducing pumping by zone or by aerial distribution within a basin. Those are management strategies that you can look at in the future, but are not being proposed because they're not someone's project, so to speak. And that would be a refinement of the model. Now, we've talked about a lot of modeling runs and granted, and it's done a great job in that to do some of the things that are being recommended, looking at variable pumping throughout the year, et cetera. That's a huge effort and yes, it can be done, but it takes time and money. And so I'm looking at what I think, and if I could step back real quick, I agree with, we need to see what the MTs and MOs look like on historical data. What we were provided was model output, that's great. But let's digest the information. You know, the meeting or two, we can continue forward, looking at what this means. But back to the sustainability indicators. Totally agree with the discussions that have been brought forward today. And it is the interrelation. Chronic lowering can cause depletion of groundwater in storage, which is another sustainability indicator, undesirable result. Can cause reduction in surface water with groundwater interaction, et cetera. So there's, and since you have multiple basins that are interconnected, outflow from one is inflow to the other and you're managing the entire area. So there is a balance. So with that, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think the biggest uncertainty is how you're going to respond initially. You're going to cut everybody back 25%? Are we going to ease into this? Because you can see the process is working. We're not in a dire condition right now, although we've been coming out of one of the driest periods that we've experienced. And conditions aren't the best. What I think that we're seeing is that we're embarking in a process and we have time to solve things. And so given that, I think we need to maintain the balance between what we really should focus on and achieve before the plan is put out, before allocation systems are adopted, and what needs to be accomplished over the next five to 10 years thereafter. And that depends, you know, again, everybody's reaction will be on your reaction, how reasonable or conservative your approach is to administering the plan.
Mr. Hopkins, before you leave, you indicate, and I was missing for a minute of your comments, sorry. But you indicated we have time. You're not referring to the Oxnard PV basins, but perhaps the Los Poses basins? Because we have the January deadline for the critically overdrafted Oxnard PV basins, as I understand it.
We have time after the plan is adopted to modify the plan, to go through development of projects. I mean, you could, you know, assign a task force basically to develop projects that look at what would be the most beneficial use of funds and efforts to, as strategies, to move water from one place to another, to develop new supplies, et cetera, et cetera. While those are good things to do, you're not tasked with solving all the problems right now. You're defining the problem and then putting forward a plan to move forward to help solving the problem. Right now, the cutbacks and the projects, the limited number of projects that you've been given that meet the criteria of Sigma are the only alternatives on the table. And what I'm seeing is, I agree with a lot of the comments, that there are huge opportunities that can increase the sustainable yield. But those aren't projects that's been put forward by anybody, funded by anybody, and would take considerable time and effort to develop through the modeling effort to understand the success of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Now, Kim, did you want to finish your part of the presentation with respect to other management areas?
Sure. AV Booth, if you could bring up the next presentation? So as you know, there's been management areas proposed in the preliminary draft ESPs. And those aren't, there's no proposed change to those, how they were in the preliminary draft to this draft in terms of the work that DUDAC's doing and the modeling and the, identifying the sustainable yields and the measurable thresholds and minimum thresholds and measurable objectives. I'll get that straight the first time I say it sometime. But we are proposing to include or identify four additional management areas within the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley basins in order to manage, potentially have the ability to manage extractions based on those bases, on those basins, mostly for the combining of extractions into COM codes. And we've done this for the water market. And see if I can get the cursor up here. So we have a seawater saline intrusion area delineated for the water market as well as a Oxnard Basin pumping depression. And what we've said for the water market is that if you're a participant with wells in the seawater intrusion management area, you can't buy allocation from outside, like in the Forbay, to increase your pumping in the seawater intrusion area. You can, however, sell allocation, so pumping's reduced, or have trades within. So that makes sense. And right now, we have COM codes, combination codes of combination wells that are spread out all over the basin. And in the, writing the allocation ordinance, there's an item in there that says that the, your board could pass a resolution to restrict the combining of wells to certain management areas. And this isn't something we're talking about doing right away, but it's something that we need to look at over time. And we need to identify those management areas in the ESPs. And so we've identified these two management areas, which are the same as what they were identified now for the water market. The Forbay management area, which essentially the Forbay basin as Area, which essentially the, the Forbay Basin as it's historically been recognized by the GMA, and then a pump, Pleasant Valley Pumping Depression Management Area. Now, we did present this at the January 17th TAG meeting, and we, there was no real common or concern by TAG members. It seemed pretty straightforward to address Mr. Gramco's question. You know, we're not proposing to, at this time, to be allocating each basins, each management area, these new management areas separately, or within the various aquifers or aquifer systems. But, clearly, down the road, that's what we're going to have to look at with, at least within the aquifer systems. But, but in the more near term, if we're considering new combinations of wells, we probably want to start looking at, how are they going to affect the basin overall? So, that's the purpose of identifying them in the GSP. We won't be managing for them. We won't have separate sustainable yields, or, or measurable, minimum thresholds and measurable objectives for them. But, we did want to present those to your board, and get your board's feedback on, on those areas for inclusion in the GSPs, so that they can, your board can make management decisions down the road based on those.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
See, on this one issue, I don't see any negatives, just that come into my mind right away. I mean, it seems to make a lot of sense in terms of the kinds of trades and, and things that the agency might want to incentivize, or consequently somehow restrict or incentivize pumping in different areas. So, it seems to be a good way to lay that foundation.
I'd like to ask Jill and our, our counsel, this definition of chronic sustainable decline, or not sustainable, chronic decline, chronic decline.
We can do that.
Just my understanding from what you were saying, why don't you come on up, if you wouldn't mind, my understanding of what you're saying is, in the 20-year period, you can have decline, but in that 30-year period after that, by definition, we cannot have, we cannot commit ourselves to chronic decline of groundwater levels. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding now. Brian Bondy suggested that maybe DWR has presented a different understanding to him. I haven't heard that yet, but yes, that is my understanding.
And, counsel, is that your understanding?
I, I'm not ready, Director, to speak to that. I, I would need to, our office would need to do some research.
Great, okay. Well, I, I appreciate that. I, I would just, and I appreciate that it's not your understanding, but I could, I could understand that there may be declining groundwater levels during this 20-year implementation period, but I think for the general public, it defies logic to say, sustainable can also be chronic depletion.
Except, we're missing the part, and this is actually begs the first question I was intending to ask, that I'd like staff to look at. You know, when, when we, when we talk about undesirable results, you know, it's easy to tick off the short litany, but we always leave out the most significant language of the statute that modifies every one of them, and that is significant and unreasonable. There's nothing that says that chronic decline in water level is de facto significant and unreasonable. The point that Brian was making is, it's the effect of that decline in water level. And, my question is, that I'd like staff to look at, is what are the, in those basins where we're looking at is, at chronic decline in groundwater levels as a, an undesirable effect? What are the effects? Because if the decline itself is the only effect, then perhaps it's not significant and unreasonable. What are the effects on the users? What are the effects on the basin of that decline? Knowing that, then we can make a policy decision, you know, is that decline significant and unreasonable, to the point that Susan was making about screening of wells? Well, if we find out that in a particular basin, or a particular management area, you know, 5% of the wells are not screened deep enough for the anticipated chronic decline 20 years from now, we can decide, all right, A, what management action would we have to take to prevent that? And, B, depending upon the significance of that management action, is that, are that 5%, or is that 5% significant and unreasonable? Because we need to know the effects. That's what's missing in this analysis. It's not just the decline. The decline is an abstraction. You know, in theory, you could have, you know, if you had a basin of unlimited depth, you could have chronic decline forever to no effect.
If you had a basin of a different.
Exactly. But, but, so the question is, but the question, but the question is, what's the effect? Because if we, if the decline produces no adverse effect, or doesn't produce a significant and unreasonable adverse effect, then it's not a, an undesirable effect with respect to sustainability. You know, that significant and unreasonable defines what constitutes the undesirable effect. I think we need to find, find out what the effects are. That's where I would start the analysis, in those basins. I think, you know, obviously, in those basins that more directly impact the seawater intrusion, it's a different analysis. But, in those basins where we're relying principally on, you know, the chronic lowering of groundwater levels as an indicator of an undesirable effect, I think we need to go back and take a look at the effects. And, and I think it's an engineering analysis to tell us what the effects are, and that's the decision of this board, to determine what's significant and reasonable, and unreasonable. Because there may be lots of effects that facially, or from an engineering standpoint, aren't positive, but because of the economic impact necessary to correct them, we may find that, you know what, those effects are, are, they may be significant, but they're not unreasonable. And, therefore, that's not an undesirable effect, even if there is a chronic decline in groundwater levels. And, that's the level, that's the level of analysis that we need to accomplish, and it's the level of detail that we're missing. What are the effects? Now, backing up before that, thank you for, for the segue into that. I think that staff and DUDAC have done a great job. I can't, I couldn't be more thankful for all the work you guys have done, and for all the work TAG has done. I've spent a lot of time with TAG members, particularly in the last week, trying to understand some of this stuff, trying to, I've been through more hydrographs and maps in the last week than I have in my whole life. And, I'm, I'm actually encouraged. I'm encouraged by, I know there are gaps in the modeling, I know there are unanswered questions. I'm encouraged, because when I read this stuff, I see lots of opportunities, that, some of the ones that Terry was talking about. Opportunities that we didn't know existed until the modeling was done. You know, opportunities to capture water, to, to create, to, to move pumping, to arrest seawater intrusion, in, in ways that, that don't just tie people's hands. And, I, so I'm, I'm really encouraged that, that the, with the modeling, with the results, I, I do want to make sure that we don't wind up setting, particularly at this juncture, you know, setting minimum thresholds that tie our hands too tightly. You know, understanding that the major exercise of the next decade will be refining this data, will be, and I, I'm sure, I, I mean, I haven't asked United or Keyagis yet, what those validation protocols look like going forward, to make sure that the, the predictive values of these models have any, have any real integrity, but I trust that they, they are or will be there. We're relying on that. And, as we get that data, we'll be able to, you know, make the adjustments that are necessary over the course of the next decade. But, I also think, and, and is a real challenge, I think the, the point that's been made a couple of times about the need for, you know, real stakeholder engagement on this, more stakeholder education in the short term is essential. The kind of additional columns in the graph that Neil McGuire mentioned, in, in graph two on the DUDAC chart, adding the historical, adding the current along with the projected, would be, would be really helpful to a well operator who could look across that chart, find his well, and figure out what today looks like, what yesterday looked like, and what tomorrow's going to look like. And, that's essential. I mean, I think, and, and we have that information, and, and I think that would help make the MTs and MOs understandable, and it would also, you know, make the, make life a little easier for, for everybody out there that relies on what we do here. Those are my comments. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for those comments. First off, what is painfully obvious to me, is the balance that this board is going to have to do, in understanding that the higher the management objectives or manage, or measurable threshold is, the more that's going to drive the need for physical solutions, or reduced pumping. And, that's a balance that we're going to have to take into consideration. When this packet came in, out, and I started looking at it and reviewing it, I had to go back to the draft study that was put out to us last year, and pull open those tables in order to identify the key wells and the perspective levels that were going to be set, and try to make sense of it. And, by the time I was done with it, I looked around, and I probably had about 14 pages of that book ripped out, and it was across my table along with the information. And, I found it to be very confusing and very difficult to understand and visualize what we're talking about here. So, I came up with an idea here that me, I want to throw out for the board for consideration, in visualizing this. Every year, we get a fall and spring water level contour map that Kathleen puts together, and we're all very familiar with what that looks like. Would it be unreasonable in order to ask that that map be put, be put to use with the management threshold and the management objectives, measurable objectives and minimum thresholds put on that, and let that contour map then come out, so we can see what those levels are? Instead of trying to deal with a number that well number 16JO3 has a management objective of negative 10 feet, what, what does that actually look like in comparison to where we are at the end of 2018? And, the reason why I say that specifically, because at Crestview, I know one of our wells at the, in November of 2018, that water level was at the top of the screen. I was within one foot when I shut that well off at the end of the year, that that thing was going to be going into the screen level, and it may be breaking suction. I'd already dropped it 40 feet and put it into the screens, chasing the water. So, how much lower can I look at reasonably possibly going forward with the projected, recommended management threshold and measurable objectives for that key well that's nearby? And, to me, going back to the definitions that we heard, I agree with Brian, that the chronic lowering of water is not an undesirable, but the impact that it has on everyone, that's the undesirable. Because that's where we're going to be investing to buy new wells and chase this water, or we're going to have to do extra work. Because that water level right now, pretty much in the West Los Poses Basin, is pretty damn close to historical lows. And, I know for myself, and the wells that I operate out there, we can't afford to go another 20 feet before we start recovering. At least without knowing it, and getting the idea that this is what we're setting up for under these scenario runs that we've accepted as a standard in which we're going to vote by. I want to see what those impacts are, if we can do that. And, I think that's the easiest way. I'll ask, you know, for your input on that. Would that be relatively easy to do?
Well, Director Rania, I, I would caution you against using those aquifer system maps, because those are, they, they're sort of an amalgam of the different aquifers in each system, to show those relative potentiometric surfaces. And, they make sense overall, because they, they give you a general basin-wide picture of what the water levels are doing. And, many of the wells, as, you know, Mr. Hopkins pointed out, we don't have many dedicated monitoring wells in any of these basins, so we have to rely on wells that are not constructed the way we would if they were monitoring wells. A lot of them are across aquifers and whatnot. And, but, DUDAC's been very careful to select wells for the MTs and MOs that are just screened, mostly, principally the ones they've selected, are just screened in a single aquifer, wherever they can find them. And, if you showed them on those multiple aquifer maps, I, I don't know whether that would be that meaningful. There are the maps of, the, the contour maps within the preliminary draft GSPs, that do show the water levels in each of the aquifers with, to the extent that we have wells to construct them. But, to the point of your going, having to go back to those preliminary draft GSPs and look at all that, that's, that's sort of the direction that we're leading to in recommending that we pull this, these, this approach, as DUDAC indicated, they're, they're doing a few tweaks on some of the MT MOs with feedback they get, and bring them into the revised draft GSPs. We'll get the revised draft GSPs out there. There are workshops that are, that are in DUDAC's budget, once those GSPs come out, to talk about these things, get the, the feedback from folks, and then address that in the, in the final GSPs. And, I think, just to kind of follow up on what you were saying, Chair West, you know, Mr. Foreman, I, I agree with much of what he brought up, and I think there is a lot of opportunity for projects, and, and I think the real fun work's going to happen, once we get these GSPs done as a starting point, and we can convene some real regional studies of what makes the most sense moving forward, and what kind of real, new basin optimization and, and regional projects can we implement, and how do we, how can we tweak the pumping around, and do lots of that kind of big thinking with a lot of smart people in the room, and also look at, how are we going to raise the funding to implement some of these big projects? And, at the end of this process, we know that our pumping and our basin management's going to look a lot different than it does today. And, so, we've, we've gotten a good starting point to do those kinds of studies. We can continue to try and get, in between the lines, we've got the brackets, to narrow that down now, but we know that's not where we're ultimately going to be, and that starts to be a diminishing effort, and we think that's where we're at.
The point I was trying to get at was, it was not easy to evaluate what the, what the proposed minimum threshold or management objective, what impact that would have on the various wells across the various basins that I operate. By going back to that data and trying to figure this out and put it together, I was not able to draw a clear conclusion. And, so, I need to have a better picture of understanding, what are you asking of us, and who's going to be impacted by it? Because I couldn't get there with any level of comfort.
Kim, Kim, is that something you think, staff thinks you can do? Pull together some information like that, that might help the board and also the stakeholders? That we've, we've kind of heard that request now from a director and also some of the stakeholders.
Well, I think we've heard some different things. I, I don't think we want to pull that together into the maps that we have, for the reasons I stated. I think that will be unhelpful and confusing. We have heard from several folks, including TAG members, that they want to see historical water levels on the MT and MO hydrographs that we can pull together, in terms of trying to show a picture. Part of the problem, again, is a lot of wells are, are screened in multiple aquifers, so we.
Certainly going to be limitations about what you can pull together in an expedient manner, but I mean, an attempt could be made, could it not?
Well, sure, an, an attempt could be made, Director Borcher, but I, I don't, I don't immediately have my arms around what that would look like. I think that what, what DUDAC tried to pull together, or what they did pull together, I, I think was really a, the first good shot of looking at what that is going to look like. And, I, And I, so I, I, I can't commit to something that I don't quite know-
Understood.
-how we would, how we would put that together and make that useful.
Is the board comfortable with giving that direction?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, I think that's going to be critical, not just for the members of the board, but for the stakeholders as well. And I, I don't know how to do it either and I, I don't have any suggestions. That's not my point, but I, maybe we should take some time to give some consideration to how do you go about taking this data and making it meaningful so that any stakeholder who's interested, you know, even separate and apart from the board, so that, but any stakeholder who's interested can understand, you know, what those MTs and MOs mean to them. Because I, frankly, if, if this board doesn't understand it, I don't know how we can be asked to adopt it.
Okay?
What, I'd like to, I appreciate your question about whether, whether we're comfortable with this. And I think it's very, I think we should definitely do appropriate stakeholder outreach. You know, we're now at, as some people said, we're at the start of, not the start of the, we're at the start of the appropriate stakeholder outreach. But one, we need to stay on schedule. This is, it's absolutely important that we stay on schedule. Two, we don't know ourselves exactly how to present the information. And I, and I can certainly understand those maps could be more confusing than they could be helpful.
Sure.
So, so I understand that. But I would just like to have us caught, I'd like to caution us on one thing, you know, when we say, how can we ask, how can we adopt these if we don't understand them? There is, the question is, what's the level of understanding? None of us understands this at every wellhead level. None of us will understand this at every wellhead level. But when we go out and do the stakeholder outreach, some stakeholder is going to, what's this mean at my well? We may or may not have that specific information and we may not be able to answer that. That doesn't mean we shouldn't, shouldn't go forward. There will be time to do that. We just, so I just want to make sure that we commit ourselves to a good faith, appropriate effort, try to communicate with stakeholders and, and answer those questions, but we don't kid ourselves paralyzed where somebody comes in and says, you can't adopt this because I still don't understand exactly what this means. I, I don't think, no matter how much time we spend, there is always another level of understanding that people get at. And what DUDAC has presented, I think, to us a number of times is, we're trying to, we're trying, we're just narrowing the brackets down. And we've narrowed them down enough that we say, it's time for us to go forward. And then we keep narrowing the brackets down as we go forward. So the, I, that's, I would, I would hope that that would be the sense of, of the board in terms of doing this.
I was only proposing that-
What's that?
I was only proposing the historical context.
Uh huh.
I've heard tag requests when I went to the meeting Wednesday, not going off down in numerous rabbit holes.
Sure.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that.
I think Neil's suggestion was a good one. With respect to Table two in DUDAC's report, where it identifies the, the proposed minimum thresholds and measurable objectives for the various measured wells, even if just for those, it showed the, the current level and the historic low, that might give a, a little context, a little perspective around those wells at least, so that people similarly situated might be able to, to figure something out.
Yeah, I'm insufficient.
And, and if I could, the other things that, that I would just like to, the determining, the significant and unreasonable impacts of chronic depletion has, has been raised. I certainly do think we need to have more conversation about that, you know, because we have, we have some representation that that is by itself, according to state law, what we can't be doing in the 30-year time period after the 20 years. And we have others that believe, no, you can as long as, so that's, that's an issue both from a legal and philosophical standpoint we have to do. And then also, I think it is appropriate, you know, what, what are those impacts? Chronic depletion, as was pointed out, you know, by a couple of speakers, is impacts on people's wells and also impacts on related aquifers. So you might say there's no impact right here on these people, but this impact, this aquifer may be impacting other aquifers. So I, I would, I think that would be helpful. The final thing I'd just like to, to get out there is I would like to have us adopt what was recommended when I asked the question, and that is, we should say no net inflows per aquifer, which was what you're recommending that we adjust that language to, correct? No net seawater inflows.
Yeah, I would say at this point, it would be no net seawater intrusion per aquifer system.
There you go. Great, aquifer system. Yeah, thank you.
An aquifer system meaning upper and lower collectively?
No, separately.
Separately?
Separately. So no net seawater intrusion in the upper aquifer system and no net seawater intrusion in the lower aquifer system.
I, number one, I don't, A, I don't see that on the, I, I don't know that that's consistent with what's on our agenda. And B, I'm not so sure that's a discussion that I, I, there's a lot, begs a lot of questions, but I'll just leave it at that. I'm not so sure that all we're asked to do is approve the general approach and provide feedback. I don't know that-
Well, that's providing feedback. Where we-
All right, I, I could, my instinct is, I don't think that's necessary to comply with SIGMA for, for purposes of moving forward with adopting an approach for the GSP. I don't think that's necessary. Whether that's an appropriate policy, you know, to plan for in the future is a different question, but I don't think it's necessary to meet SIGMA's requirements.
Well, I guess, I guess we're trying to do two things here. One, meet SIGMA's requirements and also do appropriate policy. And I, I can't imagine that this board would say, long-term, it's okay for one of the aquifer systems, a lower aquifer system, to every year have four or 5,000 acre-feet of seawater intrusion keep coming in. That shouldn't be our, that shouldn't be our policy. So I think we should express that to our staff so they get the appropriate language written in here.
I, I would think that this is part of that discussion process of what's unreasonable. And, and this is kind of what I was getting to last meeting is, and I think you and Director Rani, you got into it a little bit last meeting, kind of having that discussion that we haven't had yet. Here's an example that I could just imagine. What if sea intru-, we've been told in the past that once an area is intruded, you may dilute that intrusion, but you're never going to completely push out that seawater. So if that's true, then that, the following assumption would be that, okay, we're going to have some areas with some degradation. If those areas that have the degradation don't have wells in them, who is that degradation affecting? In other words, is there an area that we might accept seawater might migrate to if it migrated south, for example, along the coast, but was maintained and, and wasn't affecting wells and users and, and reasonable uses of water? That would be a discussion I think we need to have. In other words, making a blanket, no net advancement period from, from a point in time that we just decided upon a couple of years ago, I don't know, is, is our duty right now.
Well, I don't think that that's-
Clearly, we can't allow intrusion in the general concept.
I don't think that that's the question in front of us about, about level of advancement. The question in front of us is, is our objective going to be no net inflows? Yes or no? From a, from a long-term, that 30-year period, we're talking about that 30-year period after the 20 years, are we saying our objective is no net inflows per aquifer system? We've already, we're already saying and staff's already recommending no net inflows overall. If I hadn't asked the question, a lot of people would have interpreted that to say no net inflows anywhere. All right? I'm just trying to clarify that. I can't believe that an agency that was founded more than 20 years ago with the sole mandate to stop saltwater intrusion would go on record. And I, I think the public will go ballistic if they go, if they think that we are saying, you know, that's one issue we're giving up on. We're, we're not, I, I don't see why you can always, every five years, if you find some area where you say, hey, this is some unique area. But we ought to have at least that as our policy, that we, we are, our goal, our objective is, it doesn't mean we're going to reach it, but our goal and objective ought to be no net inflows in the upper aquifer system, no net inflows in the lower aquifer system when we're at 20 years down the road. We're not talking about right now. Talking about 20 years down the road. Is that going to be our goal or not? That'll be a pretty big public policy.
Again, I think, I think that statement's overgeneralized. Inflow means moving in at all. If we're not moving past some point that we think is important, there is the, the crux of the, of the question.
And we can, we can disagree, obviously we can disagree, but the question is, so I'm calling, the question I'm proposing, the motion, well, I'm going to make the motion that we modify that language as recommended so that it says no net inflows per aquifer for each of the aquifer systems, the upper and the lower, just to clarify that.
Yeah, Chair West, Director Bennett, maybe if I could provide some background and context as you consider the, the motion. So your board goal direction was to hold this net seawater, the seawater intrusion front at the 2015 level. The, the net seawater intrusion flux that's at the model at the coast was a way to evaluate scenarios and their effectiveness to do so. That's not an absolute determination of whether there will be seawater intrusion coming in or not. And there was not the ability with the available projects that had sufficient detail and feasibility to include in the GSP at this time or with adjusting pumping just without changing lateral pumping patterns to even that out. And so I do agree that is a, a laudable goal to achieve in the 20-year period. We have to be careful in choosing our GSP goals in this GSP because we have to show how we would meet those goals in the 20-year period. If we choose a goal that we don't have the tools right now, so I, I would suggest maybe your board consider adopting as, as a goal to, to study how, how we're going to modify our operation of the basin, what projects we can do to address that seawater intrusion in the aquifers in the next coming years for the five-year update.
Mr. Loeb, I'm happy to have us do that and study that, et cetera. I think the question in front of us right now is, I'm just trying to clarify, what did that mean on that slide when it said no net seawater intrusion? I asked Jill, she said, I think it means one thing. I just want to be, I want to clarify that's what it means. So we can still do that down the road, but I'd, I'd make the motion that we have that clarified.
My concern about, my concern with supporting the motion at this point would be just what Kim's raising. We don't know what, what the implications are of adopting that standard. You know, what is that, what is it going to, you know, what is it going to take to accomplish that? How much is it going to cost to accomplish that? What impact will that have on groundwater users if we adopt that as distinct from the no net seawater intrusion standard that we've been using? And without at least some preliminary answers to those questions, I'd, I'd be hard pressed to say, yeah, let's run down that road, not knowing where we're going.
Well, in the interest of debate, I just would point out that virtually every time that we want to do, want to delay or something else, we, we use the fact that we, there's, there's uncertainty out there when we want to do something, just yet, yet when we want to do some, I mean, we can't, we will, we don't know what the impacts are of anything we're doing today. We don't have all of that information. We're a long ways from having all of that information. The question is, what should be our sustainable, what should be our measurable objective? And we won't, we don't know what all of those impacts are. So I, I certainly, it just, it just, I, I think it's very clear and I, I think I, I appreciate that we had a recommendation, that's what it should be. I want to support that recommendation, that that's what it should, should, should be. We don't know, but we don't know a lot of things and we will always be in the, in the category. We've had some people say we shouldn't adopt a plan because we don't know this yet, we don't know that yet, we shouldn't do this because we don't know that yet. That's always going to be there, that we don't know. That demand only comes up when it's, when it's an opportunity to, to stop us from, from moving forward on this. So I, so I, so anyway, I, I think that, I think that it's a common sense objective for us to, to adopt. It can always be changed in the future, but for us to not adopt it now, I think is, sends a very inappropriate message that, about where we're going. So I'd make the motion and not, not belabor this conversation and see whether it gets a second or not and, and whether-
Is there, is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
Any further discussion on the motion? We can't-
Absolutely. Item number three on our agenda today is a request for this board to support for a grant for a brackish water desalter for United in the seawater intrusion management area. By the very definition of what that project is going to be, there will be some seawater intrusion that will be induced because of that. My concern is, of course, by taking this motion and passing it now, we just shot that project down. And we made that project much more difficult. That's the unintended consequences that happens with doing quick decisions. The graph that was up earlier showing the net seawater flux over the past 30 years shows that we have a very significant problem that's not easily addressed, that there was, under all conditions, didn't matter how much water United put in the spreading ponds. And I know one of those years was 120,000 acre-feet of water was put in those spreading ponds. We still had seawater intrusion in the lower aquifer system. That's a monster of a problem. And I think it's going to take a lot more time than one afternoon of us sitting up here and arguing and debating about it to address the issue and understand and get the full scope of this before we do a mis-, do a unintended consequence and harm and make it more difficult going forward. So I, I, I like it, I do. And I think it's reasonable and it makes sense, but I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot by making that statement now.
Our item three is to apply for a grant to conduct a basin impacts and benefit analysis to find out what will be the impacts of doing this. If the impacts of doing this, as we raised years ago when this project was presented for, if the impact of doing this is that it actually increases the amount of seawater intrusion, that's a big negative for this project. If there, if it can, as United claimed, it could do it in a way that it wouldn't increase the impacts, that's fine, but, but I asked over and over again, come to this board and show us that data. And, you know, it's never come because that data doesn't exist. And that's what this grant's going to, this doesn't shoot this grant down, this doesn't shoot item three down, but it does, it does, I think, identify if we go forward with the, with a, with a seawater intrusion project that United is proposing, we want it to go forward in a way that it doesn't create chronic seawater intrusion in either of the upper or the lower aquifer systems. So I think it is perfectly consistent with the two. And to suggest this is just a one afternoon thing, this agency was created a long time ago and it was supposed to be done in 2010 with a complete plan, supposed to be a complete plan to stop saltwater intrusion. This agency did not do it. It failed to do that because we kept, kept saying, oh, we need more data, we need something else. We failed to make the hard decisions. And alls I'm trying to do is be consistent with the state legislature that empowered this agency in the first place. And that was, this agency was empowered to stop saltwater intrusion. If we can't stand up for that at this point in time, after 25 or 30 years of this, I, I really question, you know, what are we doing here at, at this point in time? But be that as it may, I don't want to belabor this any longer. Thank you for your, for your patience.
The comments?
I'm not done. I appreciate and find humor, and I generally mean this, that I, this is not going to come off flip or whatever, that you used my own words, that I've sat up here and I've said before. And I see the irony in whereabouts I am with this and where, and I don't mean that in any way to slight you. I'm not there with you yet.
I have discussion as well. Again, I, I think you may be misunderstanding my intent and, and I am in agreement with the idea that because this agency was formed to address seawater intrusion, we are required to address it. What I'm not for is, is the generalized statement that you made that said no, no inflow. And, and I think the problem should be looked at in a much more surgical manner than that. Director Rani, I talked about the- Director Aranio talked about the United project that would, the theory of the project, as I understand it, would be that it would, it would actually pump seawater intruded groundwater with the idea of creating a depression to drive seawater to a localized point. If that were just viable and seemed to work, we actually could pull some of that degraded water into that falsely created depression, and we could actually, over time, perhaps reclaim some areas that had dilutions that increased to a point where they were unusable. So just to, in a general fashion, say no inflow, I am not for. I don't have any fantasy that we should not address it, that there should not be or will not be reductions to address seawater intrusion. And in fact, we've, we had our tag, when I attended that meeting Wednesday, all of them universally said the same thing. None of them were under any ideas that somehow that could be avoided. So I wouldn't characterize it as this board not willing to take a stand on it. We have taken a stand on it for a long time, and you know, and in fact, we've done a lot of work. It may not have been effective, a lot of hard work, a lot of reductions, a lot of limitations. We changed the way people allocated water, we did a lot of things. You can argue they weren't effective, but we weren't just, you know, a failed organization that was sitting back not doing our job. I would argue we were trying to do our job, and as we have learned and gained more information, I think we could do a better job.
Here's what I would offer, here's what I would offer. I still do agree with the fact that we need to address a seawater intrusion, and I like the idea that we've drawn a line in the proverbial sand as to where it's not going to go, advance beyond. I agree with that. But my concern also that comes back to is when we get charts like this that shows chloride levels, that our statement that we're making, in that these chloride levels, because that's how we're going to measure seawater intrusion, will never go up within that area, because that is the indication that there's seawater intrusion, I think we're binding ourselves. I agree with a line there, Wanimi Road or whatever that location needs to be, that that's where we make a stand, and we try and work with this, and you don't get that, I'm on board with that. But to say that we'll never have water quality degrade, or that we're going to make a concerted effort to prevent any future degradation within that zone, I think really limits us for what we can do in the future.
Well, I think you're completely stretching the motion. The only motion in front of us is, should our measurable objection, objective be no net inflows? There could be changes in fluoride levels, that's our objective. We've already mentioned that there will be, times will be below our objective, times will be above our objective, all of that kind of stuff. The question is, at the 30, 20 years from now, will we have that as our goal or not? It's not, it doesn't mean our hands are completely tied. We've already said as this agency, we want to draw the line at where it is now, we don't want to allow current, that's, that's an objective, all right? That doesn't, that doesn't mean we're going to blow everything up if the line moves, but that's our objective. The question is, what should be our objective as we're getting ready to adopt this plan, as we're going out to talk to the public about the plan? We are either going to go out and talk to the public about this plan, that that's our objective, no net inflows, or we're going to go out to the public and say, no, we're not ready to commit to that being our objective. That will be preposterous in my mind, but that's, that's, you know, that may be where we are. So anyway.
Hold the call, please.
Chair West?
No.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director Aranio?
No.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
No.
However, based, given this discussion, one of the things in terms of direction to staff, I think it'd be helpful to ask staff to study the impacts of adopting a standard that said no net seawater intrusion per aquifer, and report back to the board concerning what the implications of that might be, what the, what projects we would need to make that work, what costs it would, you know, what the costs would be, and who it would affect, and things of that sort. We've talked about a lot of direction. Glenn, let me ask you, have you got the direction you need from this board on item one? I know we've talked about a lot of things, so.
Going forward, just to clarify, with the approach going into the GSP, that, that direction is given, or?
Well, the, I think the, I think among the things that I heard was asking the staff to analyze and report back to the board what the effects are in those basins that experience chronic groundwater decline. Come tell us what the effects are, so that we can then make a determination on what the appropriate standard is, and whether those effects are serious and unreasonable, significant and unreasonable. There was also some, some, I think, direction with respect to stakeholder outreach, things of that sort.
Correct, but the approach that was provided by DUDAC is that?
The approach that was provided, I don't, I didn't hear any.
Chair, I did have one more comment if I could, quickly.
Go ahead.
Given the deadline that we are seeing, and we all understand, we've got the Oxnard PV groundwater GSP that we have to get out in January. I made this recommendation last meeting, and I'd make it again. It seems to me that it makes sense for us to prioritize, to give direction to prioritize the completion of that specific GSP, so that we hit our required deadline. There are probably opportunities in that period where parallel work will be done, or could be done, in the Las Pocas basins as well. Why would we not instead direct the completion of the critical one? We still have additional two years, I think, on the Las Pocas basins to complete them. I really actually envision the consultant, not, job not being finished once the GSPs are released to DWR, but actually, there's quite a bit of work left to do. We've talked about filling in data gaps, we've talked about maybe additional model runs that answer some more questions. I'd ask the board to consider that concept, and in terms of a direction to the staff.
Certainly, I mean, the amount of work remaining to be done for the GSP for Oxnard certainly warrants making it a priority. And the, most of what we were talking about earlier with respect to the, what the appropriate definition is, or what the appropriate standard is, in those basins that have chronic groundwater decline as the measure of an undesirable effect, most of that work is in Las Pocas, that work's not done, and that will take more time. So there's, there's, there's good reason to consider that, and there's certainly no reason that I can think of why those plans have to be done in parallel and both submitted this year.
Let's ask.
Yeah, that's, and I don't know that, is that something the staff has discussed or has an opinion about?
Well, your board direction has been consistent to complete the three GSPs on the same timeframe. The West Las Pocas management area is tied into Oxnard and a part of that modeling, so we, that's, that's been your marching orders, that's been, that's DUDAC's contractual requirements right now. So we have not, we've not moved away from what your board has directed us to do.
The, now, the GSP for the Las Pocas basin would include the West Las Pocas, what we've talked about is the West Las Pocas and the East Las Pocas.
Right.
And the, the GSP for the Oxnard Pleasant Valley basin would, would it include the model runs for the West Las Pocas basin, or just be influenced by them?
Well, the model runs were all run together, the whole domain of United's model includes all those areas because they all are hydrologically connected. So they run together, but each, each GSP is basin-specific. DWR required that, and that, you know, that causes some complication in how we do that because we have interconnected basins, and we have a basin like Las Pocas that's quite different in the two management areas. But that's what we, that's what the legislature decided we needed to do, and that's what we're, we're doing under Sigma.
Sorry to disagree again, but here we are, right? Let's kick it down the road, let's, you know, we're right back. When we adopted, when we adopted the emergency ordinance E, it was supposed to be very temporary until we, because we were going to get these sustainability plans done quickly. Then when it was obvious that the, that the irrigation efficiency wasn't working properly, we said, we have to change that, and the argument was made, no, don't change it, because within a year or two, we're going to have the sustainability plan done. And now, when, when we have a plan and everything out there, there will, there's always a reason to kick something down the road. I will vehemently speak against changing this now and delaying this action.
I don't think that particular thing is on the agenda, I don't think we can do that today.
That's an interesting one.
We can, we can direct staff to bring it back, but I don't think we can make a vote on that today.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree, and I think it would be a good idea for staff to bring that back, one of the other, because one of the, one of the issues that we're rattling around here as well is that as we look at, at least as we've contemplated it previously, the GSP for the Las Pocas basin would include, or at least be in part dependent upon, an allocation plan that remains a work in progress, that, that if it, if it looked solid once, has become far more liquid. And that alone might warrant rethinking the approach that we contemplated in the original draft of the, the Las Pocas GSP. If it's enough in that GSP to simply say, and we intend someday to have an allocation plan, then, then perhaps it could be ready to go. But if it needs more window dressing than that, we might be hard pressed to get there by this year. But again, maybe that, maybe the, the direction would be to bring that particular issue back for a further discussion to a later day.
I, I can imagine what that discussion will be, we will be flooded with everybody here wanting us to delay, we'll have all those stakeholders here, we won't have the stakeholders here, which would be the general public that would benefit from us logically going forward with all these plans at the same time. So I will speak against even agendizing that because of where it will take us and the energy that it will take us in terms of staff doing that analysis. We're better off having staff stay focused on continuing to move forward, meet the January deadline, give us a product that's out there, so we can begin the five-year period for people to start to evaluate. We would, we would need a specific motion, so I just want to be clear, I'd be speaking against the motion to agendize this item at this point in time.
We don't need a motion to request something to put on the agenda.
We do need, we do need to, we do need to know what the sense of the board is, whether we want that to happen or not, if the.
We don't.
So.
The board member can request that anything be added to the agenda or not, and then when it gets here, we can do with it, do with it what we will.
Sure, and, and, and the majority of the board could also vote to say we don't want something to be on the agenda.
Okay.
Right? At the, at the same time, so, you know, I'm trying to find out what that, what, what do I have to do to, to, to make whatever kind of effort there is to not have us have that discussion, because it will be an all-day discussion here in terms of that.
I wasn't looking for an agendized item, I was looking to take the board's temperature on the concept of allowing the consultant to prioritize its work to meet our statutory deadline. I'm not saying in any way that the rest of the work should be kicked down the road or delayed. In fact, it probably can continue in tandem, but that the priority of the work product be driven by our statutory deadline, simply that.
Well, I tried to just clarify so we don't leave it, you're right, and, you know, if you want to ask to have it put on, I would make the motion that we keep staff, that our direction to staff is to stay on schedule in terms of doing, doing the GSPs as we have intended up to this point in time.
I don't know that we need a motion to do that, that's been the direction and it hasn't changed, so.
But they're under contract.
But by, but by making it the motion, then staff, if staff gets a request, well, anyway, that's fine.
Glenn, to answer your question, I think, I haven't heard any, any direction that altered the approach with respect to the minimum thresholds and measurable, measurable objectives in those basins that are direct, that directly or indirectly affect, affected by seawater intrusion. I did hear direction from the board to come back with more information in those other basins where the measurable, where the undesirable effect is the chronic lowering of groundwater levels, because we wanted more information about that, so we could do a different analysis. Because I'm not, I'm not satisfied, and I haven't heard that this board is satisfied that the approach that has been suggested in those basins is the correct one.
I'd like to be clear that when you say the board's not satisfied, I'm, I'm, I would like to have more information.
Exactly.
That's different than saying not satisfied, all right? There is, there is, there is a distinction. We may, we, I, because I, I believe that, that our consultant is correct in the interpretation that you can't, you should not have chronic groundwater depletion.
Yeah, we shouldn't let engineers practice law, that's all I can tell you. I'm sorry.
But the five of us are going to have to make that, that determination, and so I believe they're correct, so I don't want to have, I don't want to have the pejorative word out there that without that information, we don't think that it's, it's appropriate.
You know, maybe, maybe another appropriate, appropriate direction to staff would be to ask staff to have DWR send someone here to answer directly for this board the question that Brian presented to them. Rather than burden the consultant or counsel with speculating about the way DWR is going to interpret their, the statute of their own regulations, let's get them here to tell us what they think it means, and that'll make our job a lot easier.
I was going to make the same suggestion.
I was going to suggest that, too. They came down a couple of years ago to tell us something, they can come down again.
And if they want to appear by Skype, we'll arrange that, maybe.
Or they can write us a letter if they can do it quickly.
Letter would be fine with me.
Okay, all right. Are we ready to move on to item number two?
Yep.
It's only five o'clock.
I'm a Friday.
All right. Item number.
I don't have to drive to the desert tonight after a council meeting, so I'm okay, I can go till midnight.
No, we can't.
I did last time we met.
Have your patience.
All right.
Please.
Afternoon, Chair West, board members, Arne Anselm, staff to the GMA. Item two is about resolutions 2019-1 and 2019-2, we're taking both resolutions at the same time because they replace and supersede two other resolutions that are interconnected. For some quick background, violations of agency codes are subject to a civil penalty of up to $1,000 a day. Resolution 2006 was the first flow meter calibration resolution, that was replaced in 2008. And then there's resolution 2013-1 that specifies civil penalties for specific code violations at $50 a day, far below the $1,000 a day. Those are for the reporting, semi-annual extraction statements, the efficiency allocation applications, and change in ownership of a well. Resolution 2013-1 also discusses the schedule for flow meter calibration notifications and penalties, so it's, it's kind of redundant with 2008-4. 2008-4 has a schedule of days, 2013-1 also, our counsel reads these as additives, so there's a minimum 300 days before any penalties can be enforced on somebody who's not calibrating their meters. 2013-1 also has specific, does not have specific civil penalties for an existing recor- 2013-1 also has specific, does not have specific civil penalties for an existing requirement for notifying a change in flow meter equipment if it's being replaced. And there are a couple of new requirements that aren't mentioned in 2013-1. The AMI, the Advanced Meeting Infrastructure, and the monthly extraction reporting. So, those would fall to the $1,000 a day if, if nothing happens. So, the operations committee discussed this and they've recommended that the AMI, proof of AMI installation, notification of change in flow meter equipment, and the submission, a submittal of the monthly reporting should be $50 a day. And they also recommended to clarify the flow meter calibration enforcement timelines by discontinuing the one in 2008 and only using the timeframes in 2013, which is a notice of violation after 120, I'm sorry, a notice of violation, then 120 days to rectify the situation, then a fine of $1,100 and another 100 days to rec, 120 days to rectify, another fine, and then it starts adding up to $20 a day. So, to achieve the recommendations of the operation committees, we have two resolutions before your board today. Resolution 2019-1 is built on resolution 2013-1 with some minor changes. It adds the $50 a day penalty. And again, this is not a new penalty. This is a reduction from the $1,000 a day. And the purpose really is for fairness and transparency on how these penalties are assessed. So, it adds the $50 penalty a day penalty for those three items and maintains the flow meter timeline from 2013-1 and then also rescinds 2013-1. Resolution 2019-2 is built on resolution 20, 2004, that, 2008-4, the one of accuracy of testing flow meters, calibration standards. It discon, this one, the timeline's been deleted, so it's all now in one resolution. And it includes some other improvements. And I have to apologize, this is where staff called an audible and didn't take these improvements through the operations committee, but it turns out there's some very needed changes that staff identified several years ago. One is broken or inaccurate flow meters must be reported to the agency. There's currently a standard that they are repaired or replaced within 30 days. It was originally in 2006. It actually is in our ordinance code as well, but without reporting it to the agency, there's no start to that 30 days. So, that has been added back in. We are recommending removing all the language regarding sealing of flow meters. The 2006 resolution in the existing 2008 resolution has a requirement that flow meters be sealed upon inspection by agency staff. In the 13 years since that language has been on the books, I can tell you no, no agency staff has sealed a flow meter. And we do not have a program to start doing that now. So, I recommend deleting that.
You gotta remove it.
And then, just for clarity, we're asking for some additional information in, in the documentation. One is the unit multiplier. Not all meters read in acre-feet. Some are 100 cubic feet, cubic feet. So, the unit multiplier makes it consistent so we understand what that meter's reporting. And photographs have always been required, but we're also going to ask for just a clear picture of the meter face and serial number so we have a record of that meter at that location. And finally, this amnesty is probably not the best word to use here, but the way the 2008 was written, it said, "Any violations prior to the adoption of this will not accrue any penalties." But since those rules were already in place and those, those were not going to allow that, however, this resolution does not take effect for 30 days and then penalties are for, if, just assuming if it's not a meter by, a meter calibration error, if it's somebody made a meter change, they still have 30 days to notify us. So, there's a 60-day window there. So, my recommendation, staff's recommendation is to adopt resolutions 2019-1 and 2019-2, which supersede and rescind the resolutions 2008-4 and 2013-1.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just one issue that I had with, this is resolution 2019-1, and it was section three, page two of three, item 2A. The executive officer may increase or decrease the civil penalty based on the following criteria. It seems to me that we, as a public agency, can't have that penalty just be kind of floating. I could see us maybe giving the executive officer the discretion to decrease a penalty based on certain circumstances, but to increase it, I think would have a bit of outrage to the public, not knowing what to expect.
I, I didn't follow where you were. You said section two.
Section three.
Oh, section three.
Directly beneath section two. First sentence.
Okay, I got you.
This is right in 2A, page two of three.
Oh, right, right.
Executive officer may increase or decrease the civil penalty for a given violation set forth in section one at his or her discretion in accordance with any one of the combination of the following criteria. I think I agree with the decrease concept, but not the increase concept. Other than that, I didn't have any trouble with anything else in either of these resolutions.
I noticed that's one of the changes in the two different versions of it. There was an amendment to this that came out between the board, issuance of the board packet and today. Any idea why that was changed? Because the original draft just said the executive officer may reduce the amount of the civil penalty. It didn't mention anything about increasing.
I, I don't think that changed. Chairman, I don't think that changed.
Well, I'm talking specific criteria.
And, and that's in, that's in the 213-1, so, I mean, that, the up or down, so it just was carried over, that's all.
Want to remove it?
Okay, so, back to the question at hand. I agree with you, Dave, that it should be, he should have the ability to decrease the amount, but I also would have concerns about being able to increase. I think that should be an issue that would be brought to the board and, and definitely involve legal counsel at that point if he felt that something was so egregious that it was greater than what the civil penalties are allowed and they needed to increase it.
What it seemed, what I seem to remember back when we did these resolutions was trying to give some consistency and, and a programm, program, programmatic, thank you, approach, you know? If at X amount of days, this doesn't happen, then this happens. So, that was very clear and staff had very clear direction on what to follow.
Could I just ask a question of, of our counsel? What does it mean increase or decrease from what? I mean, we have maximums already in here, right?
I, you know, obviously, I wasn't around here 2013-1 when this ordinance originally was adopted. I assume that's increase or decrease from the $50 a day depending on particular circumstances. You know, obviously, our ordinance code limits us to a maximum of 1,000 in even the worst, most egregious offense of, of anything. So, I'm assuming that you can go up or down from 50 a day as a guideline.
Up to 1,000.
Our ordinance code allows you.
There must be some limit. I mean, we, we have to establish the maximum that, that he can do.
Well, right. I, I mean, I think the ordinance code would prevent us from imposing any kind of penalty above $1,000 a day. Our, our enabling legislation and our ordinance code wouldn't allow that.
Uh-huh. And so, so I would, I would completely, I would completely agree that he can, he could decrease it if he finds one of these things, the, you know, the culpability, the nature, the length of time, et cetera, but, but if he wants to increase it, I think, now, let's say if we have a real bad actor, then they, then he, if it goes more than $50 a day, he should come here to us. So, can we change the language so it says it that way? That makes sense, right?
Before we, I have a question on the same resolution, though. It's 1F on page two or three.
1F, okay.
Submit a monthly extraction report is required per ordinance number 8.9. The operator and/or owner shall be liable to the agency for a civil penalty in the amount of either $50 per day.
Or.
Either.
Or.
No, that, that should not be there. Either should not be there. That was from...
Get rid of the word either.
The word either should simply be the, the amount of, okay.
Good catch.
All right, so I guess.
Now, we're back to two, to three.
So, I guess the consensus of the board was to remove.
Increase.
Increase.
Increase or.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and can we add language that says, "If the executive director wants it to be higher than that, he needs to bring it to the board?" I think that's fine.
You can do that.
Can you put that language in? Thank you.
Before we, any questions or comments from the board? From the public, I'm sorry.
Hi, Brian Bondi again. I just have questions for the AMI, and these are questions to staff that, not necessarily on the ordinance. If we've had it installed through Ranch Systems, are we in compliance?
Yes.
Because I believe the other ordinance says we have to submit proof of installation, and I never received anything from Ranch Systems to submit to you guys. Did that come automatically to you guys?
Yeah, it should have, yes.
Okay. And then, in terms of the monthly reporting, is that automatic? Because the language is that the operator has to cause or make happen, or whatever the language is, the monthly report.
Submit.
Is that automatically done by Ranch on our behalf?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we are, we are working with several other AMI vendors directly, so those, their computer systems will be reporting the monthly extractions of, the, it won't be coming straight from the wellhead and it won't be coming from the operator. So, we've been working very closely with four or five other vendors as well.
So, I guess, is there a motion?
Move the approval with the two changes.
For both night, 2019-1 and two?
Oh, I was going with one.
All right, let's do them one at a time. The motion to approve 2019-1 with the changes that we discussed, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we need a roll call, please.
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Aronio?
Aye.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion to adopt resolution 2019-2.
So, move.
The second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Aronio?
Aye.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Arnie. Let's move on to number three. Kim, that's you.
Chair West, board, the record, Kim Loeb again, GMA staff. I think this will be quick. So, this is, item is just to asking for your board's authority to, or authorization, authorize the chair to send a letter in support of a grant application that United Water Conservation District wants to make to do a modeling and study of its proposed seawater intrusion and seawater, mitigate seawater intrusion and mitigate the seawater contaminated water with this project that they've had as a conceptual project for some time, the details of which, as, as much as we know, are in the, the board letter. But important to know that what we're asking for here is your board's to authorize the chair to send a letter in support of the grant application to study what the impacts and benefits of the basin of the proposed project would be. We're not asking your board to take a position on the project at this point. There isn't enough information. That would be sometime down the road. So, we recommend that your board do authorize the chair to support the project.
Can we have the representative from United come up and, and kind of help clarify of what it is that they're attempting, intending to do with this grant? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair West. I'm Dan Detmer from United Water Conservation District. I'd like to just comment on what we're proposing here. A couple of years ago, we came to this board and others in the community with a, with a concept proposal for an extraction barrier in Brackish Treatment, Brackish Water Treatment Plant. We did a feasibility study that showed the geochemistry in the coastal zones, the degraded areas is, is treatable by RO. And we proposed a fairly large project in the Norman Beach area without modeling that or really defining it very well. We're proposing a Prop 1 grant with the state board. It would be a seawater intrusion abatement or contaminant cleanup grant. So, what we're, we're proposing to do is to better refine our groundwater model in the coastal areas, refine the mesh, add some density corrective, the seawat package that will compensate for the density differences in freshwater and saltwater. So, that's the first element is model refinement. The second element is proposing various projects in the coastal zone where we can pump degraded water and put it to beneficial use either as a potable water supply, perhaps to the Navy, as an alternative supply, perhaps to agricultural users. So, we don't yet have a defined project. We have a concept and we want to propose various scenarios and bring them back to you and, and put that in the project mix as we move forward on these GSPs.
You're looking for support to conduct basically a basin impact study with respect to potential project?
Yeah, so, just as we're evaluating other projects in the GSPs, this is one more project to put on the project list and, and part of the grant would be to make demonstrations of the area of impact and the area of, and what benefits would come from that project. To Director Bennett's comments earlier today, we would not propose to pump inland of the already intruded areas. So, we would place this project in the areas that have already been intruded. It would be a cleanup project, but it would, pumping that close to the coast induce some degree of seawater intrusion. But we would have, the difference here would be traditionally when a, when a well's hit with seawater intrusion, the pumper moves back or drills deeper to get away from that front. We would make a stand and commit to pumping at a, at a certain level at some location near the coast. So, there would be some level of induced impact or intrusion. It may help sustain the basin by pumping strategically.
I, I really welcome the upfront statement that it defied, it defied logic when the United representative, the previous United representatives said, "We can pump that, that water out where you're talking about and that there won't be any new seawater coming in." Everybody scratched their head here and said, "How could that, how could that be?" So, I appreciate your, your direct and honest comment on that and the fact that this is just a, a concept and a series of projects essentially that you're going to be looking at.
Yeah, and I, I'd make the motion to support the...
I particularly like the idea that some of the, if the grant were used, part of it would be granted, or part of it would be used for model optimization to cover some of the saltwater intrusion issues we talked about earlier.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the public before the board votes on this item?
An additional comment is that it perhaps is a supply of water to get pumping off of the precise area where we want it.
There's a motion and a second to support the recommended action. Do we need a roll call?
I think so.
Yes?
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director Aronio?
Aye.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
You know, being no other business, but we're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I beat the over-under. That's it.
Good.
(laughing).